Howdy, everybody. Good evening and good afternoon. Today is Tuesday, December 13th, 2022, and I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. The time is 5:30 PM, and we're here for the regular session of the Cappell City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. We will be convening into executive session in the first-floor conference room, and after that, I will come back out and announce our open work session. As a reminder, any individuals wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance tonight or the public hearings must sign the appropriate register outside the council chambers and list their residence address. Thank you very much. We have concluded our executive session and have ended the session. The time is 5:38 PM. We will move into work session in the first-floor conference room, and the public is invited to join us.
You know, I was proud of Gabby making the decision she was not gonna rush in and test her black belt.
There's no rush. This is the funny thing that I have to, like, explain to people is that you have this internal timeline. I'm like...
So she called me out of California. She's like, "Mom, so..." And I missed this, and I have to do a private lesson. I just think I have a way to march. And I was like, "Oh, is that your gift?" Gabby, really? You have the rest of your life?
So, good afternoon, everybody. The time is 5:40 PM, and we're gonna move into work session. We have three items up for discussion today. The first one is a discussion on agenda items. I would like to ask permission, or at least, yeah, permission to move Agenda Item Number 12. That's approval of our legislative agenda to... after the consent agenda, just to move it up in the schedule. We've got a couple of guests tonight that will be here talking to us in the next agenda item, and they're gonna probably wanna stick around for our vote, and I hate to see them staying here through the rest of the agenda. So is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other... any questions or comments about the regular agenda items? Do you?
No, I have no issues.
Okay. John?
I have few. I just need some clarification. For the Agenda Item P first, the short-term rental. I know we talked about this before, but just to get some clarification so people will know also. Let me just pull down the... Yeah, I'm not going through all of them. What are you talking about? So on P, it talks about the, I guess, the changes, right? The applicant must provide city staff verification that the short-term rental property is their primary residence, which probably was what we had only. But now it's OR. The applicant must hire an onsite property manager who has to be at the property... at the time of rental, not the entire time.
Correct.
Right? Okay. Just wanted to get that clarification. Then we added the new definition as to the short-term rental to include rental of garden, pools, garage, and outdoor accessory structures.
Correct.
And there's no changes in application process, inspection, fees, or the renewal process.
Correct.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I had on P. And then on Q, I have a couple of questions on Q. I know we're renewing this with Republic Waste.
It is not a renewal, but it's part of the contract.
Part of the contract. So I know there were a number of times that the Republic misses when it's not designated days, such as holidays. What happens to those days?
So I think there are only two days during the course of the year that are considered holidays by Republic. Christmas being one of them. What's the other?
Fourth of July.
Fourth of July? Okay. So we put out all kinds of notices about what the adjustment to the schedule is that week.
But I mean, when it's not scheduled holiday that they're missing, there have been days when they actually miss pickups?
Yeah. We contact them to go back and pick up if they miss it. If we get notification that they missed a holiday, then we contact them and they go back.
So they go back either the same week or same day?
They try to do it the same day, but it's not their... they'll be the next day.
Okay. Does that hurt? I have to buy my street council what's going on. Or not because two weeks in a row or something?
Usually, we don't have notification. As soon as we get notification, that's when we do contact them.
Okay. John, from a personal standpoint, exactly like Mindy said, they've missed my house several times, and I'll either call her or call our contact, and they'll be back out that evening or the next morning. So it's just a matter of... if they know about it, they will fix it.
Okay. That's good. And then...
It's frustrating, but good.
Okay. And then I've got, is it the block and row? Like the same one? The Q, block and row.
Block and row.
Block and... Okay. Question I have was, it talks about the rental fee being added now for the deposit?
Deposit. He's asking about the deposit?
So I was looking at this, and it says that you are not gonna be collecting $100 deposits.
Yes, sir.
And which is good, but... So what happens if the missing items are more than $100?
Unfortunately, we'll just have to make a bad difference if that's greater than $100. But our hope is that when they're providing a deposit, that will give them some incentive to make sure that all the items are returned. And if not, that will just be part of our cost that we build in a cost for replacement because we know over time they're gonna have to be replaced anyway. But our hope is with that $100 deposit, hopefully encourage people to pre the truck and its contents go here.
That would add a lot of things. And there might probably cost more than $100.
There's the potential, yes, sir. And that's just part of the cost of the program for us.
Okay. And what is the ongoing cost of maintaining those rental trailers? Whether it be the block party or the tool?
I don't know the answer to that. No more than... I mean, probably less than a vehicle in our fleet anyway. So I think it's minimal maintenance for us, except for tire replacement or any kind of repairs. But otherwise, there's minimal cost for maintenance of the trailer itself.
Do we have an idea how many rentals we have so far of each?
I would be lying to you. The tool trailer has not been rented yet. That program will start in 2023. For the block and row trailer, let me see. I think it was we had around 20 to 30 this year. But if you remember, we just started this year with the rentals, so...
And then I had a question on R. On the farmer's market, I just wanna get a clarification on this. It says now, is we're amending it for the alcohol sales? Is that just the alcohol bottle sales? Or are we talking about...
It's just strictly for the bottle.
Bottle, right? Not open container?
No.
Okay. Just that's all I wanted to get clarification.
No, because they have to have the whole permitting process involved with that.
And then I had a question on S. The Allen Road Playground, I seem to recall this was done not too long ago. When was the last time we actually did this?
So Allen Road Park is playground service. It's about every eight to 10 years of a playground service replacement. So this is not a playground. This is just a pour-in-place rubberized surface.
I thought we did that rubber... I have my memory...
It was in probably a different playground, not Allen Road Park.
No, Allen Road. Because I remember, I thought, I remember it was... it was in robbery, but we probably didn't have...
So the pour-in-place we've had is about eight years old.
About a year?
So it's about every eight to 10 years. So we go to different service options, but we're gonna go back with the same rubberized pour-in-place surface there.
And they generally say about eight, 10 years to robbery?
Yeah. That's pretty good for a robbery.
And then, last one. On T, on the bridge decking? I saw that they're gonna do the fur decking, right? What is the... well, the type of wood that they're putting? I saw that it says fur decking, but...
See, actual... So it's a lumber. It's three and a half inches thick by 12 inches wide by 12 foot long boards, just wood lumber boards.
It says Douglas fir decking. Yeah, Douglas fir decking, yeah.
It's basically, it's exactly what we have now that's going back for replacement.
Do we have a... do you have a warranty?
I don't think that's gonna be included in this quote. It's probably a two-year warranty, but that's something I can go back to on. I don't think it's included on this.
Yeah, it wasn't included in the proposal, so I was just wondering what's the warranty that includes mine. It definitely has in this one, but it's...
Right, right. So that one also is end-of-life, and we expect, you know, putting in place exactly what we have now that we're gonna do another 15 to 20 years out of that. But I can get back with you on if you actually want to.
That's... Thank you.
Any other? Item number six is our presentations. We're gonna be presenting to our boards and commission members outgoing. If anybody has anything to say, I'd appreciate comments to the outgoing board members. So I'll open it up at some point when we're doing the presentation. Any other agenda items? All right. Item B is our briefing on our legislative session, and we have Ms. Jennifer Rodriguez here and Mr. Don Cole.
So can we come over this way?
It is.
All right. Back there yelling, everybody. Hi, I'm Jennifer Rodriguez and Don Cole, and we are... This way, to the right? Okay, cool. All right. Thank you, Mayor, council members, staff. I appreciate y'all having us here this evening just to give you a little preview of the upcoming legislative session. We appreciate looking forward to the opportunity to represent y'all there in Austin during session. So just got a few slides here. This first one just details the five most definitive dates that we know, and that's beginning with the legislature convening on January 10th. Per the Constitution, they must convene on the second Tuesday in January of odd number years for their 140-day regular session. And from there, we have an extra date this year, the inauguration of our governor and lieutenant governor. Governor Abbott and Lieutenant Governor Patrick are entering their third term in those same positions. They were first elected to those positions in 2014. So we'll see. They have an inaugural ball or party the night before that. There will be a parade of Congress that day, and then the actual inauguration takes place on the south side of the Capitol on the 17th. And so then, we've had bills started filing since November 14th, which was the Monday after the general election. And that will conclude on March 10th. And March 10th is the 60th day of the legislative session. And again, our Constitution dictates that on day 60 after that, they can start to take up bills on the House floor. So the first two months, you'll read in the paper, they're not doing anything, and it seems like they aren't, but they really are. They can go ahead and meet at committees. Our lieutenant governor and speaker will make committee assignments. But on day 61 going forward, they can actually go to the floor with legislation. There's a big asterisk by that, and that is that if the governor does identify issues as emergency items, they can go ahead and take those up at any time before that March, that 61st day. Governor Abbott has made that a practice. He always has a list of emergency items. You know, it's hit or miss if they actually take them up before that date, but it does allow them to get to work on that. And then May 29th, that is our signing die, our last day, day 140. It always falls on Memorial Day. And then June 18th is the veto deadline for the governor, and that falls on Father's Day. So I'm helping y'all out there if you need to know some of the holidays coming up. Legislative leadership, as y'all know, I just mentioned that Governor Patrick is returning for his third term. He came out of the Senate in Houston, and so not changes expected over there. As well in the House, Dave Phelan was elected as our speaker at the beginning of last session, and he will be seeking... that's the first order of business they take care of. So January 10th, they open up. The Secretary of State will actually swear in all 150 members of the House, and then they vote for Speaker. One of North Texas Representatives, Tony Tenderholt, has indicated that he will be challenging Phelan to be Speaker of the House. The House Republican Caucus recently met just over a week ago in Austin, and the majority, the overwhelming majority, agreed that they will be advancing and voting for Speaker Phelan. So we don't expect a change, but we do expect that Tenderholt will request a vote on that. And just as the politics on that, Tenderholt, his campaign is based on Speaker Phelan's appointment of Democratic committee chairs in 2021. And he believes that with the Republican majority, that all the chairmans should be held by Republicans. This is a practice that predates Phelan. They have... the Speaker of the House has always appointed committee chairs from both parties. So that will be a little fireworks in the first stage just to see how that goes, but we don't expect any change. Here, I'm just giving you a little snapshot of what our legislature looks like. It's really not a lot of change from last session. It's, as you can see, it's overwhelmingly Republican even after the election. We have six new freshman senators that I know there at the bottom, including several from here. Those senators, in the lobby and in the Senate, we call them House Trains. There are three that are coming from the House, including Tan Parker. And we're looking forward to working with him on y'all's behalf. And then, I did note, just because I'm a woman, there are a few less women in the Senate, but several more in the House with Senator Nelson retiring, kind of retiring, moving on over to the Secretary of State's office. But then Senator Buckingham, she moved on to be our General Land Commissioner, and then Senator Beverly Powell, she dropped out of her race earlier this year. So we do have eight women, and then there are quite a few that picked up in the House there.
I'm gonna take a little... so the committee assignments, which is where all the mead and gritty work gets done, those typically will come out in the House. Or I'll start up here, in the Senate. It's been Lieutenant Governor Patrick's tradition to go ahead and fill committee assignments relatively early and backfill. You know, when Senator Nelson announced that she was not seeking reelection, he went ahead and put Senator Joan Huffman from Houston into the Senate Finance Committee slot as Chair. She's been working along. She's a Republican senator from Houston. In the House, typically, the Speaker won't name committees again until... generally, last session, he did it the first week of February. There are six of the current committee chairmen from last session did not seek reelection or not coming back. So there's quite a few vacancies, and along with the '28, '29 new freshmen, there's gonna be quite a bit of shuffling around of people moving into new positions and that sort of thing. But we won't really know what those committee assignments are in the House until probably the first or second week of February. The way House members are selected, they're allowed to... each one of them will meet with the Speaker in the first several weeks of the session, and they'll preference their committees. And they also have seniority appointments. So the members that have been there the longest kind of get to choose the committee that they will serve on based on seniority. That's, you know, that's how we'll see the committee assignments coming out. Now, in the mead and gritty, as Jennifer said, bill filing, pre-filing started back in November. There've been over 1,200 bills filed so far this year as of last... as of Friday. That's about 40% more than were filed at this time last session. In all, there were over 6,000 bills filed last session, about 1,000 of those in individual bill number across the finish line. You know, a lot of them are rolled into. So there's probably a little more than 1,000 pieces of legislation. They'll cobble several bills together toward the end of session, kind of push them together and get across. But that's where we are. The House deadline for filing bills, as you said, is the 60th day, so that's gonna be March 10th. And by that time, we'll kind of know the universe of what we're going to be dealing with in that regard, what our opportunities and our threats are for City of Cappell.
All right. And that brings us to our priority legislation. And by that, I mean, this is the one that has City of Cappell's stamp on it. This is going to be advocated by us. Hopefully, we pick up folks to help because this bill will apply to other cities of its past. It is a... it will be the third time that we've taken this to the legislature. We haven't had any issues with it in the Senate. It gets over. We've just had issues moving it to the governor's desk in the House, not because of opposition. There'd be a number of reasons, but it's not because we haven't identified anybody who's opposed. Most people aren't paying attention to it. So we're going. It's been filed. It is House Bill 640 this session. We expect Senator Nathan Johnson to file the companion legislation so that, again, we can keep it moving in both chambers. And we'll be working with Tan Parker's office, who has also expressed interest in helping us out this go-around so that we can extend this time period before you'll have to go back to voters on this sales tax.
Now, in case those of you who haven't met me before, this is what a tax beef looks like, especially one that works down in Austin. And so one of the other priorities for Cappell has been the sales tax issue, the sourcing of sales tax issues. And so I wanted to give you an update on just a few of the things that we're monitoring and working on very closely. One is the Comptroller's re-proposed... and you guys know this, is re-proposed Rule 3.334, which is the rule that deals with how companies are required by rule to source local sales tax. They took public comments. Public comment period closed back in mid-October. The Comptroller was required to respond meaningfully to all those comments. That hasn't happened yet. And when they finally respond, they'll publish that in the Texas Register that's published every Friday. I look at that closely, and it's a riveting read. I encourage you all to go on the Secretary of State's website and, you know, check out all of the agency rules that come out every Friday. Nothing's happened yet. They will, at some point, and I probably expect this to happen on, you know, New Year's Eve or I guess the 30th, December 30th, that they might publish the adopted, quote-unquote, the adopted rule with all of the comments to... with responses to all the comments that have been made. At that point, that will inform a little of what potentially sales tax bills are likely to be filed in the coming session. One of the things that is popped up, that has popped up lately, and I expect legislation on the Comptroller part of their interpretation of some marketplace languages. In 2019, the legislature passed a bill after the Wayfair case that said a marketplace like Amazon, Etsy, eBay would be required to collect and remit sales tax on behalf of the third-party sellers that are on their site. That, you know, if your grandmother is making lace doilies and selling them on Etsy, that Etsy should assume the sales tax administration obligation of that. They passed that. The rules have been in place. The Comptroller has taken a new interpretation that the legislation means exactly what it says, that a third party, if they're using a website, should... that the website should collect and remit on their behalf. And what they've done is they've utilized that to say that if a department store... I'm gonna call it Marshall Fields. If they have... if Marshall Fields' website is owned by a separate holding company, then the Marshall Fields store, those are two separate entities. Therefore, that constitutes a marketplace just like Amazon, and therefore, they should collect and remit on behalf of the other person. And as a result, those sales should be sourced at the delivery location, not where the sale is made. So there's gonna be legislation to clarify that affiliates are not necessarily considered a marketplace. That's popping up. The origin versus destination sourcing, as you guys know, there were nine bills filed last session that dealt with this sourcing of local sales tax issue. There's already been... we expect many of those to be refiled, both all the way to destination sourcing, some taking us back to, you know, sourcing the state of Texas did in pre-2009, which is the last time the statute changed. And speaking of that, the one that has been filed so far is House Bill 432 by Representative Mike Schofield from Katy. It is a bill that would take us back to pre-2009. It is a bill that says regardless of anything else, that the sales tax should be sourced to the location where the item was immediately held prior to the customer taking possession of it. That in and of itself would... with the warehouse and distribution capacity here in Cappell, that would be a good outcome for Cappell. The... that kind of negates some of the negotiations and things that were done with the 2009 session that passed, and so I'm not sure how much support it has. But there are multiple large distribution centers, including several Amazon distribution centers in Katy, and that's been the reason that Representative Schofield has filed that bill on behalf of his local community. Issues, big issues for the 80th session. One, every two years, we take up the state budget. We've got... the last budget was $130 billion for the biennium. The Comptroller said we're gonna... we're coming into this next session with a $27 billion surplus. The legislature, the lieutenant governor, and the governor have both talked about property tax relief, doing more in more state financing for public school funding, border security and school security. Those are the issues that have bubbled to the surface so far. Now, again, the governor has not take... has not put anything in an emergency authorization yet. The lieutenant governor has kind of outlined these things as his priorities for the session. The Speaker has not, and typically doesn't, the Speaker typically doesn't necessarily say what his priorities are. He's taken the position in the past that the House will come up with its priorities. They're not his priorities. He's just there to help the House manage their business. So that's kind of where we are. Jennifer, do you have any?
Yeah. I'll just add that, you know, these are just a few issues we threw up. There's, you know, we're going to learn more. The Lieutenant Governor actually hit 21 items. He wants the Alamoa store, you know, he had a lot of things on there, but these were things that seemed to be wide reach across the state and of interest. And so, we have Capella's legislative priority list, and so we follow that. And just so y'all know, John and I subscribe to a service where we're able to do a search on words and statutes, and that's how we hone in on, on what your interests are, more detailed than like TML. And we work with TML too, of course, and follow what they're doing, but we want to, we want to be most interested in what you are interested in. And then, just another note on the Governor, when he, at the inauguration, we can expect that he will probably lay out what his priorities are in his address and maybe go ahead and issue emergency guidance at that point. The only thing that we've, we've seen them kind of differ in the newspapers on is the electric grid. The Governor is, seems to be okay with the work that they've done and they are doing, but I think that Lieutenant Governor has expressed that he would like to revisit and maybe offer additional improvements to what they've done. So we'll stop there. A lot of talking from us. If y'all have questions or feedback.
I actually had about five items written down, and your list had four of the five.
All right. So we grade on a thing.
However, this morning, I was at a meeting and the Senator was talking that they could expect to see something on the order of a $50 billion surplus, because the Comptroller had announced and thought that there was going to be a 20 to $25 billion surplus this year alone. So has that factored into any of the discussions yet?
So I'll just say, so what the, the Comptroller, excuse me, he will issue to the Legislature an updated biannual revenue estimate on that day before session starts, and so we'll know exactly what that number is. I would say a Senator knows better than I would what that may be, but it's a lot of money. Like they, everybody's lining up to try and get a piece, as they should. I mean, this is a time destroyer.
So, so let me expand on that. The money is there. I've heard anywhere from 40, you know, I've heard the number 44 billion has been bandied out a lot, but the budget writing process is constrained by two different spending limits. There's the pay-as-you-go limit and the constitutional limit that deals with the increase in the overall economy. So the last numbers that came out of LBB get put a, what is, 12.3% economic growth for this last calendar year. And so, they can increase last year's 130, stop me if I'm wrong, last session's $130 billion budget by 12.3%. And so, they can do a supplemental spending for this current budget that we're in that runs through October of, or excuse me, September of '23. And then, that means that the new budget, the pay-as-you-go budget, starts at a higher number for next year's. But they're going, from what we hear, they're going to have more revenue than they are allowed to spend unless they get a supermajority in both chambers, and that's quite unlikely.
That's consistent with what Senator Johnson was saying this morning. His statement was that they had more money than they could spend.
Literally.
And he was very, he was very literal about that. So you mentioned the tax relief. There was a lot of discussion about property tax relief, and has there been any consensus on how, even what they're talking about when we talk about tax relief?
So part of the problem from a state standpoint with property tax relief is property tax, all property taxes are local taxes. And so, for the state to have any impact on those, they can either, they can only authorize higher, you know, homestead exemptions or buy down, do tax rate compressions or things. All of those things are expenditures on the budget that are constrained by those, by those limits. And so, they want to do that. There's, there's talk about, you know, the, the things that I've heard about, what can we do with this surplus? What can we do that's maybe impactful? Most of you may have seen your, your utility bills that have gone up recently because they capitalized, the utility companies were able to capitalize the winter storm Yuri charges, the billions of dollars that they ended up having to pay more for electricity during that period of time, they capitalized them over 20 years. So there's people talking about taking a couple of billion to just buy back down everybody's utility bill over the next year. There's folks who have been talking about a temporary reduction in the sales, in the state sales tax rate. And then, they're really talking about doing property tax compression again, like they have in previous sessions. But again, all of those are kind of school finance and budget compressions that are, that get really complicated. And they're probably not particularly interested in mine or Jennifer's opinion on that specific issue.
So to be continued, right? But I, but I will say lots of discussion. And just to point out, the first 1 through 20 bill numbers in the House, and 1 through 31 in the Senate, haven't been filed. And so, I think that's, once the, the folks who are going to make those decisions, once they do, those are where we will see those bills filed that way.
Counsel, any questions? Mayor Prokhorov.
Thank you. You mentioned that number of people filed opinions about the sales tax rule 3.334 since they advertised. Do you know how many people filed opinion in favor of keeping the sales tax at the origination?
I don't, on the written responses or the written comments to Rule 3.334, we don't have a window into that, and the Comptroller's not required to comply with Public Information Act until after they've processed and either published or, at some point, we'll get an idea of who submitted comments, how many they are and what they said. We've done that in previous, in previous rulemaking. I know that all of the, all of the comments at the, at the public hearing on the issue were for the Comptroller to go back and interpret the statute as it's written rather with, than the way they would like it to be. And so, comments were consistent, including now, after, after a while, our biggest, the biggest change was the NFIB, the National Federation of Independent Businesses, has weighed in kind of on our, on our side, because the rule is very complicated, that we would prefer stick with origin sourcing and not this bifurcated system that you have in place for internet orders one way, in-person orders another way, and/or fully destination sourcing. So all of the public comments so far have been similar to Capella's.
So just to follow up question to that, have there been elected officials filed any bills last year or last session or this session, if you know, to keep the sales tax at the origin?
So the one bill that has been filed is the House bill by Representative Schofield that would, it is, it is a slightly different version of origin sourcing than we have right now. It is, it is a, what's considered a shipped-from origin sourcing statute. None of the other bills have been filed yet. I anticipate that there will be, I've talked with several members, I know that there will be three or four more bills filed that would support the Capella position that we're working on. I don't know, I don't know if there will be bills filed that take us all the way to destination sourcing. There were two, there were two of those bills filed last session. And I know that one of the bill authors from last session has no intention of filing a destination sourcing bill. In fact, he may be filing a bill to clarify and make sure we stay at origin sourcing. He is, he has flipped 180 degrees and, but I'm not sure about, about the others, about the others.
So one of the things that we heard this morning, and this was coming from Senator, Senator, was that the last session was quite controversial and uncomfortable for some of the members. Do you see the tensions on the floor this session as well?
I do. I mean, I think every session has its own personality, and you don't know what it's going to be. You know, we didn't expect Yuri and all that last session when we knew we wanted COVID, and then we did have, you know, legislators left because they didn't want to take those. So there will be something. I mean, the composition is similar. So I think that it may be, I don't know if it'll be as uncomfortable, I guess that's, you know, for each person to decide, but I think there will be some tension, especially leading to 2024 election.
I will say, yeah, I think there's going to be, I think there's going to be tension. And she's right. Every session is different, and they're all dysfunctional, you know. Yeah. Well, I would say is, of the 1,200 bills or so that have been filed, the vast majority on both sides are fairly, I would call them red meat base issues, that members are refiling bills that didn't get much traction during the last session, or they're filing bills that are very targeted toward the primary base of their party, both parties. And so, you're going to have those issues. They, they come up every session, and depending on how tense things get, it's a lot easier to not have a tense session when you've got a 40-plus billion dollar surplus versus, I say that, we've never had one before, that I've been doing this for, you know, almost 30 years, and I can't remember ever going into a session where they've had, you know, we've had budget issues before, but they're generally the other way around. We don't have enough money, what are we going to cut? I'm wondering if it's going to be more tense, that they're now trying to decide, you get a car, you get a bomb. So I don't know. It's, it's too hard to tell, I think.
You mentioned the bill that was proposed to change from origination to destination, that it had a change of, yes, sort of mind?
Right.
Do you know what the reason was, or?
Yeah, I know exactly what the reason was. One, the, some of the leadership, and especially out of Comptroller's office during the interim in 2020, told a lot of the rural members that a switch to destination sourcing would be really good for their communities. It would direct more of these online transactions to their locations. And so, not understanding what that meant for small businesses and what it really meant for smaller regional retail hubs, you know, those smaller communities, you know, pick them out, that are actually large communities, Midland, Lovac, you know, Longview, Beaumont, you know, those are actually, you know, those are pretty decent-sized communities that are getting a lot of surrounding area retail traffic. The member that filed that bill, the destination sourcing bill, didn't realize what that would mean for a lot of the local business, for the compliance issue for a lot of the local businesses there, or what it would actually mean to the sales tax hit that his community would take on that. And once we were able to, this is actually what lobbyists do, once we were able to educate him on, hey, take a look at what this really does, and walk you through how, how this mechanically functions and impacts your district, he was able to say, oh, well, I didn't mean to do this. If I could unfile the bill, I would. But, so he has now turned out to be our, one of our best champions in the House on this issue.
I gotta, I gotta ask, are you being modest? Were you the one that changed his mind?
No, I was not. His, the county judge, his best friend, the county judge changed it. Now, I did have a long conversation with his county judge, right? But, you know, I would say, as lobbyists, I don't know that we change anyone's mind. You know, what we do is try to give them information and put, put good, viable information in front of members, and they generally, you know, they all want to do well by their, by their constituents and by their communities. And I don't question any of them's, you know, commitment to their job. I think they all try to do the best that they can with the information they've got. Sometimes I disagree with them, sometimes, you know, they're just wrong.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your visiting with us tonight and looking forward to an exciting 140 days.
I understand.
Thank y'all, and we're there. So y'all come up, whether it's for a local organization or otherwise, you know, we're there to help y'all, so please reach out.
I was also telling Mike before this, and I was having a little PTSD, and I'm so glad, not, don't take this wrong, I'm glad to be leaving, but I served on my own, my hometown city council for eight years. And so, I'm very excited about.
Stay over at the.
Very excited about it.
Thank y'all. Thank you.
All right. Item C is Discovery Capella Campaign Update and an Additional Funding Request. This is Ellie Brexton. Good evening and welcome.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Mike, I'm going to hand this to you. For this to work for you, just tell me. Yes, the dashboard, yeah. Good evening, and thank you guys so much for allowing me to be here tonight to present this to you. I also want to thank you guys for, for your trust and believing in what we want to accomplish and your approval and support of Discover Capella. What you're looking at right here is a collage of photographs that were taken as part of our marketing campaign. All these people are local, these businesses where they are are local, and we're really, really excited about what we've been able to accomplish. What I wanted to do tonight was kind of run through with you really quick what we did with the funding you gave us this past year and where we are right now. And then, of course, I'm going to be asking you guys for more funding for 2023. What Mike just handed you guys is the dashboard of the results of the advertising, which actually began in November. So that's just a dashboard of what's been happening over the last, what, six weeks? And you'll start getting this report quarterly now that the advertising is up and running. But the reason I didn't have it in the packet for you earlier to look at is that the marketing firm just got it to us yesterday. They thought that my presentation was on the 15th. And so, they just got it to me yesterday. They scrambled to get it together for us. So what I'm going to do first is, of course, walk you through exactly what we did with the funding that you gave us this past year or this year. This is the timeline. As you know, the funding was, y'all approved it in January, we got it in February. March and April, we did the community surveys. Some of this you guys have already seen because I came back a few months ago. But the, we did the community surveys where they talked to individuals, they talked to businesses, and, and then, and that was the marketing firm that did that. I do need to back up and say, you know, in February, we formed our committee made up of community leaders and, and business owners that, or, and business operators that met with the marketing firm that we are doing, that we are working with, which is Belmont Ice House. And they have served as the advisors for everything that we've been doing. So again, in March and April, we, they did the community surveys. In May, we reviewed those surveys. We determined what our markets were. We started working on our brand development at that time. June and July is when they spent time actually doing the brand development. And like I said, they were going back and forth with that task force that we had put together, sharing different ideas and, and concepts. That actual logo that you see was decided on by the, the task force. And, and so, the brand development, all that, everything was run through that task force that we had put together. In August, we started the website and social media development. We, because the website is, if you've seen it, it is very. We, because the website is, if you've seen it, it is a very interactive website. And we had to work with the city and we developed the social media part and all of that, putting all of that together. But before we could launch it, we had to have the photography done, which was some of the pictures that you guys were just looking at. So it was in September that we actually did the photography. And then we also started developing, based on all of the information we gathered over those first few months, we started developing our strategic plan for 2023. In October of 2022, we launched that website and I sent out the link to all of the city council members and all of our board and all of that. We launched the social media sites. Currently, right now, the social media that we are using, based on the statistics that we gathered from our surveys and stuff, we're just using Facebook and Instagram. Those are the two markets that we want to hit most. During that time, we also started developing the ads that we were going to be running and also developing the audio advertisement that we have. And October 27th is when the website went live. And the, so I'd just say November 1st is when the actual advertising campaign began. We couldn't begin the advertising campaign until that website was live because everything we're doing is driving people to that website. And from there, it goes. As I shared with you before, we found that our primary market are the on-the-go families. These are families that are busy, but they're looking for things to do with their family and their kids. Secondary market are active enthusiasts and our tertiary market are empty nesters. However, based on the statistics that we saw from our advertisement over the last six weeks, it looks like the empty nesters are going to be our secondary market versus the active enthusiasts. The empty nesters, and I'm one of them, and those are people 50 and up looking for things to do with their grandkids or their older kids. They are interacting a lot more with our social media and our websites and all of that than we had originally anticipated. These are the counties where we are doing the advertising. And then this, from all of that information, we developed our website. This is the actual website. I don't think I'm going to, but that's the front page. And again, this caters to people that are looking for things to do with their family, their kids, their grandkids. And so we have, we stay, we work very closely with the city of Capel to make sure that we've got the most updated information, things to do here, events that are going on here. So it's linked to the Capel website, the city website. It's linked to the art center and a lot of other, the farmer's market and all of that. But you can find out all that information on the website. The advertising has been designed, again, to traffic, to send traffic to that website and to our social media. This is the version, and this is Heart Aid Restaurant. And that is actually one of their cooks from the restaurant. I love the slogan here, "We love cooking for crowds." And this is the advertisement that is running in bars and hotels and movie theaters. There's a QSR code on there so that people can, if they're just sitting at their table and they see it popped up on a screen, they can just scan it. It takes them directly to the website. This is the one that will be running on outdoor billboard space. They do not have the billboard, billboards up and running yet. But again, this is actually our, you know, Trinity River Kayaking. This is one of their employees from there. And then this is the one that runs in the grocery stores, the malls, the convenience stores and things like that. And this, of course, is the farmer's market. And I love that one. Think outside the aisle. This shows you the ad, some of the ads. Now, we have what they call the carousel ads, where you'll see this and you click it and it just goes on to several different ads that we've created. But this shows you what we've been putting on social media. And again, that's our playground there, it's farmer's market. We also have the audio and that, again, is running on Spotify, Pandora, iHeart. And if it's, if you're on like a website or on one of our websites or you've been doing some Google searches and that banner pops up, you can click it and you'll get that audio.
Perfect day trip down the road off the highway, not too far from home and close to perfect. A place where farm fresh goods come from local folks. Where you can explore the natural side of majestic Trinity River. Where charming locally owned shops are filled with one-of-a-kind finds and tasty food. Where you discover miles of parks perfect for nurturing your natural side. Discover these and other experiences in Capel, not too far at all and close to perfect. Click the banner to learn more.
So that shows you, that's everything that we've created over these past few months. This shows you the expenses, what we've done. You guys gave us $165,000 back the first of the year. And this is where we have spent the money. We have, we've only spent, out of the paid media, as of today, as you see on that dashboard, we've only spent about $25,000 of that $77,000. But the rest of it will be spent over December and January of 2023. What we are asking for, and this is only from February to September of 2023 because we want to get on the city's regular funding calendar versus like last year you funded us in January. This shows you what we anticipate we will be spending on media. And again, that's audio, that's digital displays and that's out of home, which is like your billboards and things like that. This $66,000 is what the agency will be charging. But that's looking at doing more video, creating, doing more photography and things like that. And then the contractor fee. Currently, we are the contractor for the city to get this done. We have designated that with this part of the funds, we'll use that to have a staff person that will actually be interacting with the businesses here. Our goal at the Chamber of Commerce is to drive traffic into our hotels and our restaurants. Through, from the hotels and restaurants, it'll feed into all the other retail and other businesses that are here in Capel. The purest form of economic development is hotel and restaurants because people come, they eat, and they go home. And so we don't have to provide all the civil services. And the money that they're spending here enables that restaurant server to be able to pay their rent and enables the hotel employee to be able to buy their car insurance, things like that. So our goal is to, our goal as the Chamber of Commerce is to drive individuals' traffic into the community to spend their money. So we are focused on educating the big businesses. We've got a lot of these big companies like AAA and a lot of them, Container Store, Veredest. They do conferences with their employees. They bring in employees that they train. And so we want to make sure that we have an individual on staff that is constantly communicating with those businesses. Hey, I mean, I was talking with AAA just today. What have you got going on? What have you got coming up that you can use our hotels with? Do you know, Mr. AAA, when you're here with your big conference, that there's a ton of restaurants right down Dent and Tap and Beltline Road that you can use? And so that's part of our goal. And so that's what the contractor management fee is, is we're overseeing what the marketing firm is doing, but we're also working on interacting with these businesses to make sure they know what's available here in Capel when they bring their conferences and special hoods here. So this is the funding that we're asking for from the city, $224,000. That comes up to about $27,500 a month to fund this. And ready now to answer your questions. Who's got questions?
Brianna.
I do want, we'll have a lot of questions, but I'm going to start. If you can go to the one right before this. So here, the contractor management is 10%, but on the next page, it's 12%. What? Can you help me understand that increase?
Again, because we have a person that we designated to actually be out into, in the community marketing, Discover Capel. Right now, what we've been doing, we have an individual on staff that handles all the social media. She developed the website, but now she's going to be managing it. And she's going to be managing, and that's the constant communication with the city and all of that. She'll be handling the website and social media side of it. But again, this, this next year, there will actually be an individual, which will probably be me for 2023, that will be going out specifically and targeting what companies can use our hotels and restaurants and find out what events they have coming up and all of that. So there'll be a lot more staff time involved than there was this past year.
And then I, the other thing I want to understand that I really wish was here was how much has been spent to date? Because it was just kind of like glossed over. And so I want to understand, like, how much has been spent to date and how much is left? And what's that going to be spent on or where does that fit into the request for 224K?
I can answer that question, but I can't pull it off the top of my head. But currently, we spent the $30,000 that you see on the agency services, with the exception to about $6,000, most of that has been spent. And that was on their development and all of that. The photo shoot, that whole $25,000 has already been spent.
And so that's okay, like of the, and just to simplify it, right? Like of the 165, what was the number that's already been spent to date?
Well, we have right now about $84,000 in the bank. But, no, yeah, $84,000 in the bank, but we've got to pay the, we haven't paid that $25,000 in advertising that you saw on that. And then we've got that $77,000, well, excuse me, subtract the $25,000. So whatever is that, $52,000 more in advertising to come out of that. And then the chamber has only been taking the 10% per month, so you've got to add that in there. And so.
So you're starting 2023 with what? How much?
And we will probably, so there's 84 in there. We take out our 20, so there would be about $82,000 in there. And again, 77 of that will go away because of advertising.
Okay. Because I'm trying to understand, then on top of that, you're asking, the ask is for 224K? In addition to what is you're starting with for 2023?
Well, the money that you give us won't go in until February and we'll run out of money the end of.
Before then?
January. Yeah.
That's what, for now. Thank you.
Could you go over the dashboard and give us kind of a summary of what you're saying here?
Okay.
For example, how effective has the campaign been?
Well, currently, like I said, it was up and running. The website went live on October 27th. The advertising went live probably November 1st. We, again, just, it's been done, but we've got to write the check for the $25,000. We just haven't done it yet. Out of that $25,000 is what we've spent on advertising or what we're paying for in advertising for those six weeks. That has gotten us 3.978 in impressions. When we say impressions, that means someone saw the advertisement. They either saw it online or they saw it on the screen somewhere. The CTR, and I've got to go back to make sure I explain that one correctly, is the percentage of times that people saw the link, excuse me, saw the ad and clicked the link. That's the percentage that they actually click on the link when they see it. The engagements are people that actually saw the ad and they engaged with it in some fashion. And then, of course, the CPM is what it costs per impression as of right now. $6.29 per person that's had an impression. Does that make sense? And then if you go down here and you look at like the streaming audio, how many, how many, how many, how much they've delivered on the streaming audio? And again, like that's Spotify and Pandora and stuff like that. Based on the data that they're doing, this, how many times it's been heard. Someone's heard that audio. And again, that's just over a six-week period. The digital displays, again, that, do you have a question?
I'm getting on the list to talk.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. The digital displays, again, that's, did they see it on, you know, on a Google ad? Did they see it on a website that they were visiting? Did they see it on one of the digital displays, you know, out on a screen somewhere? The paid social, there's 2 million, 2.8 million in paid social that have actually seen the paid social that we purchased. And then the out of home, that's really, I've said that about the digital display. The digital display is more website stuff. The out of home is the, like when you're in a restaurant, you see a streaming across the screen or you see a billboard or something like that. That's what the out of home is. It looks to us like that what's getting hit most, of course, is the paid social and the digital displays. And again, I've got the full report here. This is just the one dashboard. If anybody's interested in seeing the full report, or I can send you the link to it where you see everything in detail on this report. But again, based on what we were seeing from this report, the, I call them the baby boomers or the, what's the word, the empty nesters are really active with our, with our advertising.
Kevin?
A couple of questions. So on the, looking at this graph here on the spend, notice up to November 21st, 22nd, something like that, you had, you know, on this chart here, looked like the impressions were more effective and the spend was a little bit lower. And then is that because of like the holiday crunch, ads get more expensive? Did they explain any of that to you on that?
I do not know the answer to that. I can ask the question though.
No worries. And then second question I had was on the target geography. On the presentation, you kind of have this North Texas area right here. Are you seeing, do you have access to like a heat map to where you can see where the ads are most effective? Because just kind of thinking about our geography in the metroplex, trying to think about being effective with the ad spend. Are we less effective the farther we go out? What does that heat map tell you in terms of, what's our reach? Is it a two-mile reach, five-mile reach, 10-mile reach where we're actually getting, the impressions are turning into actual engagement? Do you have any data on that?
We do not, I do not have that data. I know that Daniel Armbruster was on that meeting with us yesterday and he asked a very similar question. And they said that they did not have it right now, but they could, yeah, I'm thrilled that he's on that committee. But that is something that they should eventually be able to provide for us. We're going to.
I think that that, to me, that data would be very interesting to help us understand the financial commitment that the, that we're spending, you know, the money that we're going to commit to this. I want to make sure that it's justified. I don't want to just make sure that we're throwing funds out to, you know, hitting out like East Rockwall County and nobody is, you know, coming over there, over here from there. So.
Based on what they're telling us, they have a target market. It doesn't necessarily mean what county they're in. Their number one target are the on-the-go families. And so I don't know how they would gather that information, if they're able to gather that information as far as where it's getting, you know, it depends on what community we're talking about, you know? Because Capel is a very young community. And so you're going to see a lot of hits just around here. Based on our surveys and our studies, Capel is a very young community.
I would definitely be interested to get, if you could ask them for some detailed information about those two bracket heat maps.
Okay, I will do that.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ellie, for the presentation. I sent you an email and you responded to my email. Thank you for the response. So this, my question is a follow-up to that email. Can you talk about the local businesses that we used to spend this money on? The media advertisement company we hired and the photo shoot people that we used so the audience who are listening to this presentation know that we use the local business?
Absolutely. And that's what we're all about, is local business. So we made sure, now, there was no marketing firm in Capel that was qualified to do this magnitude of a campaign for us because we did send out RFP and got lots of responses. So the firm itself that we're using is Dallas-based. But everything we've done with them has been local. They, the businesses that we used, of course, you know, Heart Aid and George and Tattered Style and, you know, the Community River, excuse me, Trinity River Kayaking. And those were the locations that we went to do our photo shoots. And those were the locations that we went to do our photo shoots, the individuals, we did not hire professional models, I thought in the beginning that they would, they instead used local individuals. So the gentleman that's on the front of our website, he is actually one of our farmers from Farmer's Market. And, and the, the children that were in the play yard, those are children, we, we found the right people to fit it, but they, they were all individual residents, family members. The, and, and I did tell them, I said, one thing is we want to be reflective of our community. And so we made sure that we had a diverse group of pictures, you know. Tattered Style, of course, that's Dana, I don't think, where is she? I don't see her on there. But she's on, yeah, okay, we'll go to the first one. Here it is, and you'll see all of them. And so again, all of these models or all of these individuals, Heart Aid Restaurant and George and all of that, these are all local businesses. The photographer that did the photography is local. He is, he lives here in Capella, RJ Hinkle Photography. He does photography for businesses all around the country, but he's here in Capella and he does a beautiful job. And so when the, when the marketing firm told us that they were going to find a photographer, I said, I really want you to check this guy out before you make a decision. And they said he was perfect. So he did a great job. And, and so all of the money that has been spent has been spent local with the exception to the marketing firm itself.
Just a follow-up question. You had mentioned that we advertise in movie theaters. Which movie theaters did we advertise?
I wish I could tell you, because I've asked them that question too, I said, exactly where? And they said, well, and I told them, so I'm going to get that question.
I've seen it at San Polos.
Have you?
Yeah.
Yay!
In Flower Mountain, yeah.
Because they, because they said it really depends on which one, because, you know, if, if it's a, shall I say, a movie theater that caters more to my demographic, you're not going to see it as much as you'll see it in Brianna's demographic, a theater that caters to her demographic, because they really are targeting, you know, the different demographics, you know? And, and so they're mostly catering to the on-the-go families. And so it really depends on where it is and who it is.
Don?
So from a, from a measurement standpoint, I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around, how do we end up measuring? Long-term, maybe not today, but how do we measure success? I mean, I, I think the pictures and the layout and it's, I love all that and I love the fact, will we hearing this and seeing it in theaters and everything, but how do we measure how successful we are? Is it just, just data like this or what's, what's the long-term measurement?
I won't say, I think, I know, it'll be a combination of things. It will be, yes, this. And like Daniel said to me today, he said, I want to see these numbers, numbers double by the next report that we get from them. And so, because again, they just kicked this off in, in November. So we, so we'll, we'll look at that. Now, these will be quarterly reports and so hopefully it will be doubled by then. But that's one of the things that we're going to look at. And then having a person on staff that focuses on that, we'll be able to keep a record of, okay, we met with AAA, they agreed to bring their, their conference here, or we met with the Rotary and they're going to be having their national conference here, whatever, things like that. We'll be able to maintain data on that ourselves to see, okay, we, we worked on this and this was the result of it. So that really is, I mean, and then hopefully you'll see tax dollars go up, but that, that's long-term, you know? But right now, the, we want to see the, the hits on our website increase and we want to see these numbers increase as far as people, as far as the hits on the impressions that they're making.
Okay. And then sort of going back to, Brianna was talking about the funding and so we got two different time periods. We had a year, an annual, a, a one-year time period for the original contract and it had a bunch of startup costs for one thing, that's, that was in there. So that's not necessarily ongoing, but ongoing is really paying for the media buy plus any refreshing of ads or new creative ads, right? That, is that the bulk of the, sort of the ongoing?
So what you saw again was February to September, because again, we want to get on the city's regular funding calendar. But we anticipate, we don't, I'm not saying a hundred percent, what I gave you was the biggest possibility. It may be, we may spend less than that. And the marketing firm's going to spend as much money as we give them to spend, so we're not going to tell them how much money we have. We, but we, that's, when I gave that to you guys, okay, that's the maximum that we anticipate that we could possibly spend in that time period, the twenty-seven-five a month. Our goal ultimately, and, and you'll be hearing from me again mid-year and the end of the year, is that we would like to have a full-time person on staff that this is all they do and that they will take and manage a lot of this stuff ourselves in-house versus having, and we'll still use the marketing firm for that stuff that, you know, like outdoor advertising and stuff like that. But, and we, we need to have a quality person on staff that can do that, you know, someone that understands this stuff and can do it. And so ultimately, we would like to see those dollars, even though we, we're not going to lower the number of dollars, that those dollars will be for paying a person here versus an outside marketing firm, or at least a lot less to the marketing firm.
Okay, that makes sense. And it looks like the spend is sort of, you know, as we've ramped up, the spend is, I say that, yeah, the spend has gone up over time.
Right, yeah.
So based on, if we started at the first of November and that seventy-seven thousand that was up there, we've spent about twenty-five thousand dollars of it, so, you know, back of the cocktail napkin math, it's about four thousand a week roughly over the last six weeks, or four to five thousand. Is that sort of the normal run rate or how do you, how do you, how do we decide how, what is our sort of ongoing weekly spend or do we accelerate it? Do we double it? Do we, is it going to be four thousand? Because I was trying to do the math on getting to the end of January and that's only six weeks and so, but we got fifty, fifty thousand dollars left. And so does that mean we're going to double the spend between now and the end of January or we're only going to spend half of that? So I guess, how do we decide how much, how quickly we accelerate the spend?
That's a good question. It is hard for me to say we're going to spend, spend exactly that amount of money.
Okay.
Because again, like last, yesterday when we were talking with them, they're like, you know, right now because of the holidays coming up and everybody's doing other stuff that we might go dark for a little bit, you know, don't need to spend quite as much. And I've asked them, okay, how do we compare with other cities and other communities? And they've given us, you know, on this report, like I said, I'll send y'all the link to it. But it, it kind of gives what the average expectation is, you know, versus how we're doing. But again, they explained and it is true, it's, it's really hard to, just as our first time out. So we don't know exactly how much to expect to spend. Everything that we're doing right now is a guess. Now, once we've been at it for a year doing this advertising, we'll have, be able to better answer that question. I hope that answers what you're looking.
It does, it's trying to, because I'm, I'm very supportive of getting, you know, seeing a program through to sort of let it gain, get its sea legs under itself and, but at some point, you know, there's some, you know, resources, there's a scarcity of resources. And so how long do you go or when do you know you've been successful or when do you know, how successful you've been and things like that? So I'm just trying to get a, a frame of reference here for that, where we are in the process, especially since it looks like we're going to be revisiting about six months from now to have this conversation again and everything. And the fact that is, quite frankly, the, the new ask is only a seven-month period and it's a much larger ask.
Again, because purchasing that advertising, we knew when we made the ask this time that it would take several months of getting everything together and then we would start spending on advertising.
Yep.
It, it's my, my belief that once we are more established and Capella becomes a household name like Southlake or Allen, you know, I've talked with those chambers as well, we don't have to spend as much on advertising, but we never want to stop having someone available to communicate with the businesses around us and the hotels and the restaurants, you know, to coordinate everyone so that they're utilizing these local restaurants and hotels.
Yep. And Mike, we paid, we did this out of the hot, is that right?
Yeah, it's correct.
At some point, I just, I'm curious, because I know there have been the two or three things we've done out of hot, I want to, I wouldn't have seen a reconciliation of what, what we've spent and what we've obligated to pay out of that fund, because I know it's not.
I know that.
We had, we had a good source there, but, you know, we have started earmarking some things out of that.
Kim and Tracy have worked up a five-year plan.
Okay.
So.
That'd be great.
If you bring that, if y'all give the, go forward tonight to Ellie and me to amend the contract, either way, we'll bring you that.
Yeah.
Kevin?
It was kind of a question about the movie theater. So my question is, and if you'd ask the firm, do they, do they specify the ads that they run like per theater or like the movie that's playing in the theater? Because I think that's interesting. Based on the demographic, target demographic. Have you asked them for that?
It really depends on the target demographic. Again, a movie for kids is probably going to get more of our advertising than a slasher film, you know? And so, I don't, do you take your kids to that? But that might hit the active enthusiast, I don't know. But anyway, those are outdoor people, they wouldn't be in the movies anyway.
I'm just curious, like how detailed that they're actually targeting and like, is it by theater or is it by movie playing in the theater, so?
It's, it's based on, based on what they're telling me, it is based on their market. It's, it's, and so again, I would think it's by the movie, but I can ask that question, but based on what they're telling me, it really is based on what, what's attract, like I said, what's going to attract Brianna is going to be different from what attracts me.
Well, I had a question, I have another question, but I think following up on that, I think the other thing they should look at too is how many people are really going to the movie theater? Because I, I have gone, I still like going to movie theater, but every time I go to a big-name movie, like the theater's empty.
Yeah.
Because people are now streaming movies. So I'm, we, we got to figure out, right, like where are we, where are we spending our dollars? The other question I had though was, you mentioned bringing someone on board to do this work. So our chamber, even though you're in Capella, right, does a lot for Capella, but you also have members in other neighboring cities. So will this person be focused only on what they're doing for like this Capella, Discover Capella site, like how will that?
Yeah. It would be, although we don't call ourselves a convention of business bureau, it would be basically that same thing and you cannot co-mingle the two. Chamber is about the Chamber of Commerce and our memberships and our sole focus is to serve those members of our chamber. Where Discover Capella is funded through the hotel occupancy taxes, means it's about everybody. And so typically in those circumstances, you cannot co-mingle the staff, you cannot co-mingle the goals or any of that. And so although the chamber is the contractor, the individual would be, if we end up working it out the way we want to work it out, that person would be solely focused just on Discover Capella, they wouldn't be focused on the chamber.
Great. Okay. I think the other thing I would just say, and I don't know where everybody stands on this, is I'm all, I, I fully support this. I supported it in the very beginning when, when the ask was for a hundred and seventy, a hundred and sixty-five K. I'm all for supporting our local businesses and everything else. I, I feel like there's still some questions and, and some clarity that could be put up there and I don't know if someone from the marketing firm comes in and helps us understand what the plan is going forward, because I, I would prefer this not to be like a hundred and sixty-five now than for seven months, it's two twenty-five and then the next few months. Like I don't even know what it's going to be for all of twenty twenty-three next year because you're only going up to, till, up till September.
It'll be three hundred and thirty thousand. I do, that was my original, when I put the proposal together, was three hundred and thirty thousand, which is, which is the twenty-seven-five. But because we're trying to get on that.
Fiscal year.
Yeah.
So October one, twenty-three through September thirty of twenty-four.
Yeah. And then just understanding like what does refresh of ads mean? How often is that, right? I, I, I don't know, I think there's still, I still have, I feel like some gaps and I don't know that I'm ready at this point to say yes to two hundred and forty. That's wrong, leave it.
I have one question myself. We received some fairly good press out of the Dallas Morning News. Does this campaign have any print media connection at all?
Well, you're not doing any print media.
So that was either, okay, so that was all, so, okay, excellent.
And the reason why is again, because our primary target market, families on the go, most of them do not read print media. They get everything on, you know, off their phones, off their computers, off of that. So they just don't, they didn't, they didn't feel the need to spend the money on it, wasn't our market.
And sorry, one more thing too, just to go back to what Kevin was mentioning about like the heat maps, like that should just be, all these firms should be using AI machine learning to help us understand all the heat map gaps, white space, all of that. Like that should just be standard information that we should be like part of the package. Because those algorithms are out there and it's just what everyone's doing in the marketing space.
Now Cindy, our website person can talk to you about algorithms and our social media and all of that, and she's the one that's handling that part as far as our social media. The firm is handling the purchase of the social media ads and on and all of that. But Cindy, well, this report gives you some of that information on the social media, but Cindy can also give you that information as far as what's going on with our algorithms and all that stuff. She's quite the expert. As far as the heat maps, like I said, we have asked that question, but again, because it's new and we're, we're, we've got a specific target market and this report is so new, because again, it just went live in November, they didn't have that information, but we did ask that question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? John?
Thanks, Ellie, for the presentation. I've got a few questions. On the, I saw on the website, you have this of vendors. Is that all local vendors?
Yes, we work directly with the city of Capella on those, has nothing to do with the chamber, that's every, but again, we're only looking at restaurants and hotels and things to do here. You won't find, you know, you might find Kevin on there because oftentimes if people are, excuse me, championship martial arts, because oftentimes when people are visiting, it's like when I used to travel all the time, I'd go into a community and I'd be like, where's there a gym? Where is there a salon? Where can I get my hair done? Things like that. So you'll find all of that on there, but you won't find a law firm or anything like that, a CPA or anything, because that's, that's not visitor information as far as somebody coming in, spending their money and going home.
Okay. And then as far as all the list of vendors are there, do they know that they're actually on this website?
I don't know that all of them know. We've worked very hard, because again, as the chamber, we only have a limited list. I don't know if all of them have been made aware that they're on this particular website, everybody that's on there. I know that everyone that's part of the chamber or the city or anything like that, they've been made aware of it. But again, we don't have the contact information other than what we've got them to notify all of them. We could probably put it in the city newsletter that goes out and, and make sure, because everybody gets those, make sure that they're aware through that.
And part of the reason why I asked that is going to follow what Don was talking about. I mean, I, I think I've asked this in the beginning too, how are we going to just, or how are we, how are we going to get the, how, how do we know this is effective, right? And one of the thing that I know you said when you talked about maybe a business that's coming to, you know, use the hotel, those are pretty obvious, they're using the hotel, but like the small businesses, like local, whether it be a restaurant or the retail shop, how do we know they actually, sure, they liked it, how do we know they actually came and shopped there and actually the, but, you know, the businesses benefited?
And, and that, I don't know that we can know a hundred percent. We can tell you the amount of impressions that have been made, but that's just like when, you know, again, I'm going to go back to Kevin, because I know his business pretty well, when he advertises for championship martial arts, we don't, he doesn't know how many of them showed up at his business because of the advertising that he did. They may have shown up word of mouth or someone else may have visited and went back home and said, oh my God, do you, you know about this, blah, blah, blah. And so I don't know that we can ever provide one-hundred percent hard numbers, we did this amount of advertising and we got this amount of, of response back from it. But what we can say, like I said, is we can show you the amount of impressions, the amount of interactions, like I said, we have seventy-eight-hundred people that have gone to our website and from there they've clicked all around and blah, blah, blah. That we know and, and they only knew it existed because of the advertising that was being done. And so we can only measure that by the amount of impressions that we know we are making and the people that are interacting with our advertising.
Okay. And for future purposes, it'd be really great if we could find out, I mean, by what the advertising that you did, whether they actually stopped by J MacLennan and dined there and to kind of figure out what restaurants actually, or what. there, and to kind of figure out what restaurants actually, or what retail stores actually benefited from this advertisement, the money that we're spending. And I don't know, I don't even know if it's possible, but even with the, if it's a, the business owners with consent, having a, some sort of QR code that could say, I was here and, you know, snapping a picture and posting on the website, that you could collect and say they were there, that kind of quantifies as to how many people from the website actually, or actually visited, and, and the local business benefits, so we could, and the reason why I say that is because at some point, you know, if the business is actually benefiting from the money being spent here, maybe they might be willing to contribute going forward, because it's being effective, bringing people not only from local, but maybe even, you know, further out as well.
Right, and, and I agree, but I do think that the only way you can measure that is to do exactly what you're talking about. There'd have to be some sort of campaign set up where, you know, visit, that's, you know, tell us why you were here, just like when you, you know, go to the dentist's office and says, how did you hear about this? You know, you have to, you'd have to do something like that, because there's no way that the marketing firm or the chamber could tell you how many people went in because of our advertising. You just see your numbers go up, you see your impressions go up, and that's all.
Kevin?
Just going to tell, John, just kind of coming on what you're saying, just, we have business systems in place that, you know, when we have people actually coming, we track all metrics from, you know, we know our ad spend, we know our impressions and things like that, and then we trickle down, and we, you know, can see, we track our inquiries, we track how many people actually call, how many they, they come through the door. So, I think the, the first piece is the ad spend piece, but then, it really is up to the individual businesses, their, their business practices, what they do, how they track all of that. So, I know we have, we have strong systems in place to make sure that we're being responsible with our money, but, I mean, that really is kind of an individual, but now, what I do is, like, we have a lead tracker, when somebody comes in, we ask, how did you hear about us? And so, if they actually mention Discover Capel, then I would, I would be able to track that and be able to take that back and say, but, a lot of times, it'll say, like, you know, Google or Facebook ad or something like that, or, sorry, magazine.
Right, and talking about maybe getting cooperation from businesses, so that, because we are spending money to bring people in.
And, and that's what the goal is with this individual that we hope to eventually have in place, is to have that relationship with the restaurants and the hotels, and, and the big, what I call the boxes here, to say, okay, we had a big convention last weekend, did you see an increase in the traffic in your restaurant? And, you know, and talk directly to these restaurants and things like that, that, you know, and again, like I said, do some sort of campaign, but we'd have to get those restaurants and hotels to agree to do it.
Yeah, I think to, like, to John's point, what he's saying is, is that, you know, having that feedback, I think, is, is really important, but then I think what Ellie is also saying is that having the manpower to actually go out, educate the, the businesses about this campaign and stuff. So, I think you guys are really close on, so at least we know that what, you know, just trying to see how it connects.
I think we both agree that we need that feedback to find out what, what kind of results we're getting, if we're able to, it's just how we would implement it.
So, I'm going to say similar to what Brianna said, that, that there's a lot of uncertainties that hasn't really been given a solid answer, so I'm kind of with her about, I don't know yet about that big jump, and then what's next after that. So, that, those are the questions that I kind of have.
So, what is it going to take? Because that's kind of what she was here for, was to come back next month, to come, to have an agenda item to approve the funding. So, what are you, what are we going to need to feel comfortable with that?
I think we asked a lot of questions that she, like, Ellie, you still needed to go back and ask the, for sort of answers and preparing.
The only thing I wrote down was the hotspots, you know, where are, where, where are these impressions? You were like, what, what camp, what are the hotspots? And, and again, because we did ask the question about, so where are these ads? And they said it really depends on what community it's in, and, and what their demographics are and stuff like that as far as where the ads are going. But that's the actual outdoor ads. The website, the, the digital displays and stuff like that, that really depends on Google searches and social media searches and stuff like that. You know, you know, you go looking for a pair of shoes online, and then all of a sudden, you get all this stuff, and that's what they're doing as well.
And Ellie, I think that was just one piece of a lot, like, I'd like clarity on the budget, I think we talked about spend, like, the rest of the spend, the spend going forward, what are the KPIs that you're looking for, what does success look for, and look like? For example, what is the, what is the plan going forward as far as, like, you know, is it, is it going to be two hundred and, whatever I wrote down, two hundred and twenty-four K, you know, every fiscal year? Like, what does that look like going forward to maintain this?
Three thirty.
I'm sorry, three thirty, yeah. So, so there, it, like, I think it's, I know from, I can only speak for myself, right? It was, we support it, I support it, I want it, I want our businesses to be successful, please go out, this sounds like a great idea, let's see what we get from it, and then, what's the plan? What, what's, what's the vision going forward with this? Instead of, I'd like to see more than just it being kind of every nine months, every seven months, every so often.
You're talking about what kind of funding we're going to ask for, or you're talking about what we're going to do with it?
Funding and, and well, and then what's the plan, right? Like, are we, are we only going to be in, in, what, what is, what do the ads look like, or what is the, or where, or, I don't know, I mean, council member, you know, John asked about, just how do we measure it? What does it look like? I think there's just, I think there's, there's still some fundamental questions that we're looking for clarity.
The, the ads that I showed you are what our ads look like. That, that's what they look like, and so, but, and moving forward, the only difference will be they'll do different shots at different locations. And, like, you see the old lady and the, and the woman there, that's George. Right now, that is not in our ads, because we're not running that one yet, and Dana with Tattered Style, but they'll be doing basically the same thing, it'll just, they'll, they'll change the locations and they'll change the models.
Then the cost should go down.
Yeah.
It shouldn't go up, the cost should go down.
I was, I was going to say, the initial cost, I thought is the most expensive, because this we're starting off.
What, what you gave us in the beginning was to kick it off, was to do all the studies and all that, but what we're saying, what you saw there is twenty-five thousand a month.
Can you put the numbers up real quick, please?
Was the twenty-five thousand a month for advertising itself, whoops. And so, again, that's what, that's what we spent. Now, this money was what you gave us, hundred and sixty-five thousand was what it took to get it ramped up, and then three months of advertising. That's what that is. And so, moving forward, it'll be advertising and, and the, and they'll go in and do new video and new ads and new audio and all of that stuff. So, again, these are guestimates based on what they did this last year, but your monthly spending still comes out to about a little over twenty-five thousand, or twenty-seven thousand dollars a month versus it was twenty-five thousand for advertising. And that was just for the advertising, this is for everything. So, your cost in advertising actually has gone down a little bit. The agency, they can limit, I mean, they can say, okay, you only want to give us a hundred thousand, then they'll do a hundred thousand dollars worth of advertising, and we'll get a hundred thousand dollars worth of results. But...
So, yeah, I, I would argue that, because what does a hundred thousand dollars worth of results look like versus a hundred and sixty-five, two twenty, or three thirty? What, what does that look like?
What they do is they, they put together, okay, this is how much it's going to cost us to do outdoor, outdoor advertising, this is how much it's going to cost us to buy digital advertising, this is what it's going to cost us to do the audio and, and pay for all of that. And so, if you say you've only got a hundred thousand dollars to spend, then they're going to spend a hundred thousand dollars, and they're going to get as much of that that they can get.
No, and I, and I, no, and I, and I hear, I, I hear you, right? Like, it's ten pictures versus twenty pictures.
Right.
Fine, but I think the question is, what is the ROI for that? What does that look like if we spend a hundred thousand versus three hundred and thirty? I think that's what I'm hearing from you guys, right, and myself, is what does, what do the results look like? How do we measure that? I think there's so much more, like, that could, we need to, like, dig deeper into what is our plan as we move forward in this versus just surface level ads on a website, in a movie theater, on Spotify, whatever it might be. There's got to be, there's got to be more.
They got the strategic plan, wasn't it in their, in their thing where it showed, this is our, where we're going to be targeting this year, and this is what, how we're going to do it and all of that, right? So, I'm...
Kevin?
Kevin, yeah.
So, my, my question is, so, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of, like, I need, I need stuff. Could you tell us, and maybe, maybe the advertising firm has told you this, how much time, how much ad spend do we need to gather enough data to be able to extrapolate, okay, these are the kind of results that we get for, for this type of ad spend? And I think that that's what I'm hearing that my other council members need, is have they given you any, any indication on, on parameters like that? Because I think that's what, that's what we're asking here.
Yeah, they did give me one advertisement that they did, and I don't have it in front of me, but it was a campaign that they did, they spent forty-three thousand dollars, I can't remember if it was South Lake or Dallas. It was like a, a six-week campaign that they did for them, and showed, but I'll have to pull it up for you. So, they did give me, because I did ask that question, I'm like, like, show me what normally this sort of thing would do. The data that they gave, give us is, was what their averages are, and, and I don't have that in front of me right this moment, but they did give me one of those where it was like forty-three thousand dollars that they spent and over a six-week period, and this was the results from this op, op, and.
So, do you think that, because I know you're going to go back and you're going to ask some questions, do you think that when you go back to that, the ad agency, that you could ask, say, okay, this is the kind of ad spend that we're looking at, you know, what kind of timeline, you know, my, my city council's asking me, you know, like, what kind of timeline do we need to be able to deliver results, to be able to answer some of the questions that we're asking? Can you go back and then get that information to us?
Okay, I'm not sure where you're at, you want to?
So, may I, may I try that one?
Please, please go for it, sir.
What we, what, what I think I'm hearing is they're wanting to know, when can we expect to see some results? And, you know, because right now, it's very undefined about when that's going to happen. And so...
Define results, again, because that, because again, and I...
That's fair.
Right, that's where I've gotten in, because I've gotten into these same conversations with this firm, and I will bring her with me next time, but define, you have to define results. Does, what, what, what do you feel means results?
I, I think that the problem is, is maybe some of us don't understand what results we're trying to get on an awareness campaign. If you're just trying to get the word out, how do you know that the awareness, I mean, is, is it understanding the click-through rate? And are we hitting a certain target click-through rate? Are we, you know, is there a certain level of engagement that, like, I think, if we understand what the objectives are for the money that we're spending, and are we hitting those number, I'm, I'm taking a stab at it.
No, absolutely, you're absolutely right.
No, 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 this is what I need to hear.
Well, I know, and, and I think that would help, because we're asking for tangibles in an intangible type of idea.
Correct.
It's an awareness campaign, it's hard to be, understand, you know, what those eyeballs, you know, that have seen the, you know, the website, does that turn into cash? We don't, there's no way to know that, right?
Right.
But what we can understand is how many people actually saw it, clicked it, and engaged, and what number should we be hitting?
So, if this had been, we saw four million impressions that translated to three hundred thousand clicks, which then translated to three thousand engagements, which then translated to thirty people coming to Capel and spending money.
But we can't tell you that part.
Not yet, that last part.
There will never be a time that I, we can tell you that part, unless we have a, a separate campaign where we're asking people as they walk in the door of the restaurant or the hotel, how'd you, how'd you hear about it? That's the only way we would know that one.
Well, Ellie, I think just to add to this is that, and I think, I think we're talking, it's, it's a circular argument, right? Because what are the results? When, when we engage that firm, you worked with them, the team worked with them, what, what was their, what was their goal, their mission, their vision, and therefore, help us understand what that looks like, so that then there is some measurement to results, because, and then, and then the firm should be able to tell us, since this is their subject, their subject matter experts in this space, how long will it take for us to get there? What does that look like? How long? And also taking into consideration, like, I mean, while we just went through a pandemic, or a recession, or this might be happening, like, I don't, there might be things that we just don't know, and that's their area of expertise.
I think probably I should bring Erica with me next time I come, because she can answer all of that detail.
John?
One of the things that I always struggle with is, like, we get three point nine million impressions, but I'm like, well, I don't know what that's relative to. Like, I don't know what should I expect for, you know, for, it, it's not broken down, it's just a, sort of a number, and it sounds like a huge number, and it sounds great, but I don't know what it, it's relative to. So, if, if they had that type of thing, like, you know, you ought to see, you ought to see this many impressions, or whatever the met, whatever, whichever metric it is, I think that will, I think that would be helpful.
Right, based on the conversations that I've had with them, because honest to God, I've asked them all these same questions that you guys are asking. But based on the conversations I have had with them, because this is brand new.
Right.
And this is Capel, it's not South Lake, it's not Austin, it's not Allen, it's not Frisco, it's Capel. There is nothing that they can give us that says, this is what you should be getting, because it's Capel. Now, they can tell us what they've done with other communities and what their results were, but that doesn't mean that's going to be our results. And, you know, Grapevine is all about shopping, so there's going to be a whole different result from their advertising versus ours, because ours is about families on the go, looking for something to do with your kids. So, it's a smaller market, and...
But that's, that's...
And so, I, I don't know, so what they told us, and like, when I asked about the, you know, seventy-eight hundred people visited our website, is that good? And, and Cindy said, and Cindy knows exactly what she's doing, she goes, compared to what? It's brand new. We don't know until it's been up for a while.
I'm actually in favor, because I don't think, I mean, we spent a hundred and sixty-six thousand, or whatever it is, I, you know, I certainly don't want to pull the plug on somebody who started, and we've only got six weeks of roadmap here, so I, I'm certainly in favor of continuing on. I am curious, like, when would, when would they know they have success, if there really aren't any, anything to compare it to? Like, when would they feel like, yeah, we've done?
When the numbers keep going up.
Just, just increasing numbers?
The numbers keep going up, the, the website has more traffic, and we are engaging with these companies around us to utilize.
Well, I'm in favor of continuing, because I, I mean, I think it needs to be given a fair shot to, to be successful.
I don't have anything, I just, I'd like them to come back with more info.
I think you're going to need to bring her back in with some additional information.
I'm just one vote.
I made some notes, I can get with you later, and I'm sure Mike has recorded some stuff.
This is all recorded, so.
He will review it.
Let's go.
I do want to say thank you guys so much, and I really appreciate these questions. I, honest to God, I've had all of them myself, and so, I will, I, we will give these answers for you. And thank y'all so much for your support so far, so thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, so we'll expect to see her back in January, perhaps?
Oh, no, she will be back in January, because the contract ends in January.
Yeah, contract ends.
So, perhaps early January?
Well, it'll be the first meeting in January.
All right. The time is seven twenty-five, we're at the end of work session, we'll move into regular session of the, in the council chambers at seven thirty.
You about to say something?
I was going to call for the city council.
Oh. We texted me about six or seven comments to that discussion, I'm like, oh my God.
I hope you.
Ladies and gentlemen, the time is a little bit after 7:30, but we're still waiting for a quorum of the council to, to come up on the dais. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the time is 7:34 PM. We have concluded our work session, and we're moving into the regular session of the Capel City Council. Just as, as a reminder, anyone that wants to speak tonight during our citizens' appearance or the public hearings must sign the registers that are located outside of the council chambers and list your, your address. Tonight, for our invocation, we have Rika Yadav with the Allies Interface Group here to give our invocation, and then we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance, so please remain standing. Please stand.
Good evening, everyone. Here I offer my humble prayer, representing a Hindu community, the larger group being interfaith alliance of Capel. I begin with chanting a few poetic verses in Sanskrit from ancient Hindu scripture, Rigveda, followed by the meaning. Om Sangat Chadvam Samvatadhvam Sambhomanam Si Janatam Deva Phay Gay Sayathapuvve Sanjanaan Upasate Samanu Mantra Samiti Samani Samanam Mana Sahchittamisham Samanam Mantra Adi Mantra Yevah Samanenavo Havisha Juhomie Samaniv Aaputihi Samanahar Dayaniva Samanamas Tuvoh Manohu Yathavasuhaha Sati. And the meaning is, may we march together with a common goal, may our purpose be the same, may our intentions and aspirations be harmonious, may we be open-minded and work together in harmony, may we strive to reduce disparity, may we speak in one voice, may we follow the example of our ancestors who achieved higher goals by virtue of being united. In other words, may we all work together for the higher goal of public welfare. God, may we be blessed with your divine presence here with us today. May we open our minds so that we may receive your eternal wisdom, open our spirits so that we may know your leadership and guidance, and may we open our hearts so that we may receive your wonderful love. Om Shanti, Shanti, Shanti. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Item number six is a recognition for our outgoing boards and commission members. As you are aware, most of the heavy lifting is done by our volunteers that serve on our various boards and commissions. Council, does any one have anything they'd like to say in, in addition to that? Councilmember Hill.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you so much for all the time you dedicated, and the evenings you spent, you know, without all your efforts, we, we couldn't get through all the work that's in front of us. You know, you really help us, give us some guidance, and, and so I want to thank your families for well, as well, you know, because they're, you're, you're giving up their time with, with them, so I appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to echo what councilmember Hill just said, that the, the effort that it takes to volunteer and serve the community, I think pretty much all of us here have been on one of the boards or another, and it is a commitment, but you give that in the interest of the community and for the betterment of the community as well. So we do want to thank each of you for your service, and we hope that this is not the last time, and that you, encourages you to serve even better, even more at the next time. So thank you again.
Councilmember Hina Jose Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, I guess also just to say thank you, we really appreciate your time and your interest in serving our community. And again, as councilmember John June just said, my hope is that this isn't the last time that we will see y'all, and that there'll be continued interest in serving our community. But again, thank you to you, your families, for the time that you've spent, and, and just taking the time to, to provide us input and recommendations that we take to heart. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Carol.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Echo what everybody else has said, but also, in, in this society and the world we have today, one of the things that sometimes separate us is not understanding the bigger picture. And just by be, you being involved in these boards gives you sort of an insight into how things really work and what really goes into it, and, and what a lot of different opinions are when you start hearing around the table what is being said. So I think that is a, it's a, it's a great learning experience, and not to mention all the input that you give to the city. So we very much appreciate your service.
Mayor Pro-Tel Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to echo what other councilmembers said, thank you for your service. We all are elected officials, are also volunteers, and we appreciate your time given to the boards that you are, you served, and we do really appreciate all your time so that we are living in a better community. Thank you.
So, what, we have certificates of appreciation for each member, I'm going to call you up and, and present the certificate to you. I'm not going to read every ones, I'll, I'll read your name and, and which board you served on, but it's very simple, it says, certificate appreciation is proudly presented to Priya Kelly, if Priya will come up, in sincere appreciation of your time and efforts to the library board presented this 13th day of December 2022. And it's signed, and, and we really do appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next one is Rhythm Kandawal, who served on the Parks and Recreation Board. Next is Siddharth Shenoy, also on the Parks and Recreation Board. Next is Kensha Subaru, or I'm sorry, Subara, on the library board, and I'm sorry if I butchered your name, I really apologize. Next is Paula Waldron of the Smart City Board. Next is Russell Cowdery of the Future Oriented Approach to the Residential Development Task Force. That's a mouthful. Next is Cam Shams of the Economic Development Foundation. Thank you. Next is Mabuba Khan of the Recreation and Development Corporation. I had the pleasure of serving with Mabuba for a number of years, so thank you very much for all the time you spent with me. And last is Richard Rewerz with the Capel Recreation and Development Corporation. Is there anybody else that we by chance left off? Councilmember Long.
You misunderstood my, my sign, obviously, that I wanted to say something.
Well, go right ahead, sir.
That's exactly right. It's very brief, by the way. Your, your time that you spent serving on the boards or commissions are, is invaluable to us, and all I can say is thank you, because it makes our job much, much easier.
And I, I think everything that the council has said is absolutely true, we couldn't do our work without you serving, and thank you very much, and we all owe you a round of applause. Councilmember Long, I apologize, I saw you nod your head, and I thought you were agreeing with what we were saying, so I apologize for that.
I was.
All right, item, item number seven is our citizens' appearance. Tonight, we will also have three public hearings, which are separate from our citizens' appearances, and those will be heard as a part of each regular agenda item. For our citizens' appearance, persons wishing to speak on any matter other than the items that are scheduled for our public hearings on the agenda must sign the register and list their address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each. An individual speaker time may be extended by an additional two minutes with the approval of the majority of the, of the city council members present. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberation from the city council due to the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will break in and make the request of the mayor and the city council if they would like to expend the speaker's time. Do please be cognizant of her when she does break in. We do have a number of people that have signed up to speak today. First on the list is Sandy Ishay. Sandy? Yes, please come to the microphone so that we can hear you. The one up in front is usually better. List your name and address, please.
Okay, I'm Sandy Ishay, and my address is 320 Crooked Tree, Capel, so not too far from here. And, and I'm here to, I'm a core member, and I'm here to support Shirley, and just because of the importance of daily exercise for Capel residents. I was injured in a serious automobile accident in 1984, about 38 years ago. This is the same year that my husband and I became a resident of Capel. I suffered a traumatic brain injury, I've, I've come back pretty well and was able to resume my career with American Airlines, in largely part to a very strong and regular exercise routine. Today, daily exercise is critical for my mental well-being, balance, healthy aging, I, I exercise every day at either the Core or the Senior Center. I know many others who also rely on exercise for their mental health and physical well-being. Plus, the facilities are also used by Plus, the facilities are also used by Capel's teenagers. This is a great place for them to hang out, and there's a basketball, a gym for them to play basketball or whatever. And we are just blessed that the city of Capel has such wonderful facilities. But on Thanksgiving weekend, the Core was closed from mid-Wednesday all the way through Sunday. And I would ask the city to find some way to keep these available with either reduced hours or usage during holidays. You know, the offices can be closed, or the pool, plus the pool, or also we don't have any classes, or, but the most important thing is to leave the cardio and the machines available. And I just want to say, thank you so much for listening to me, and you guys are just awesome, and I wish you all a Merry Christmas. Did you want to say anything?
Okay. My name is Shirley Chan. My address is 237 Westbury Drive. And then I have here the membership petition to request a call out during the Thanksgiving week of 2023 to be reevaluated, because I have a survey for around seven cities. We are the only city that calls four and a half days. And the other cities around the US like Roosevelt, Flomant, Greville, South Lake, and they are open Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And then there are other two cities like Dallas, and then they are open Saturday and Sunday. So I have not only the petition letter, I have 151 signature from the member.
Ma'am. Ma'am. Sorry. The time has expired.
Okay. So I'd like to know, can I present this?
Ma'am. Ma'am, you can finish your- If you want to come back down to the podium.
And then everything I want to say actually is in the petition letter. I have over 150 memberships signed, the petition. So I hope next year, during the Thanksgiving week, we have more day to exercise. So that's my request. And I will send the original copy. The copy I sent to you for the signature is a copy. The original signature I will send to the director of Parks and Recreation, Jessica Carpenter, Ms. Jessica Carpenter, and I have her talk to the core manager. So I will arrange that myself. So I just want the city to know our wish for the Thanksgiving week to be open more for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person to sign up is Barry Raven.
I'm here to support the zoning change-
Sir, please state your name and address.
Oh, sorry. Barry Raven, 201 Turnberry Lane.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm here to support the zoning change, the removal of the building in Old Town, and also the development of the new development.
Sir, did you mean to speak during the public hearings, which you're going to be addressing the topic that you-
Oh, maybe I did, yeah. Is this not the time?
You're welcome to speak during a public hearing at any time, but we actually have set aside time specifically for the topic that you're going to address.
Why don't we do that, then? That works better.
All right.
Okay. Thanks.
I'm sorry, I'm having some trouble with the next name. It's double, it's kind of crossed out. First name is George Peromo. George, I'm sorry, I did not recognize your last name there.
I'm sorry. That's okay. I didn't write it very clearly.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Certainly. George Peromoff, 1721 East Beltline Road, apartment 626. Okay. I am chairman of the Senior and Community Center in Capel, and I speak for many members of the center and especially for all the members of the advisory board, advisory committee, excuse me. I came here to talk about the potential move of the church, the old church, on West Bethel School Road and its proposal that was presented to you a few weeks ago. And in all due respect to Councilman Long and his wife, we are very much opposed to it. As envisioned by Mrs. Long, the vacant lot in front of the Capel Senior Center and Community Center would become a village of affordable spaces for artisan shops and pop-up businesses. And I want to thank the editor of the Capel Chronicle for keeping us up to date on a timely basis what goes on in these meetings. This plan, Mrs. Long wants this little village to be anchored by the former church building, but would also include the house at 532 South Bethel, South Capel Road, as well as the cottage salon building across Bethel Road from the church. The architect drew up a schematic that includes, in addition, three new 800-square-foot buildings. This plan would certainly block complete visibility to the Capel Senior and Community Obviously, cost is always a question. The estimate from the architect is 3.3 million. We all know that-
Sir, I apologize. Your time has expired. Mayor, council. We're okay. George, you have two more minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Architect estimated this project's price tag as 3.3 million, and although I realize there is money available for this project, we all know that projected costs always increase in the final amount that is spent on any project taken on in a major development. So we think that consideration of this matter should be put off at least until after the master plan that city manager Land very kindly talked to us about at our last advisory committee meeting has been completed, and we really think that it's an inappropriate use for that land, which has now got nice walkways and trees and green grass. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Dr. Jack Henderson. Yes, sir. Will you be speaking for or against? Thank you. That concludes all the speakers that signed up to speak for our citizens' appearance and for those of you that intended to speak during the public hearings. If I miss your name, please remind me when we get to that point. Item number eight is our consent agenda. Consent agenda is routine in nature and is generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or passed council action. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. We do have a large number of consent agenda items today, which is primarily due to the end-of-year reratification of previous agreements. So, council, is there any item that you would like to have pull from the consent agenda? Councilmember Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to go ahead and move to approve consent agenda items A through V.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Carroll. All in favor? Long, Hina Jose Smith, Carroll, Neves, John, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed. The motion carries. Yes. Thank you very much. We did, we are going to move item number 12 up in the agenda order, so number 12 is going to be heard now. Item number 12 is consider approval of the city council's 2023rd legislative agenda priorities for the upcoming 88th legislative session. Ms. Patinas, do you have anything to bring forward? City council, we heard a fairly nice presentation on the state of the legislature. Does anybody have any comments on our legislative priorities that were distributed and have been discussed in previous sessions? Seeing none, this is one of the most important things that I think that we take on as a council, because it does set our future of where our city is going, and it allows us to interact with our legislators in Austin in a credible and very concrete way. So I appreciate all the support that you've given in creating the priorities, and we look forward to a very exciting 140 days down in Austin. I would entertain a motion at this point. Councilmember Hill.
Yes, I make a motion to approve agenda item number 12.
Thank you, and seconded by councilmember Neves. All in favor? Long, Hina Jose Smith, Carroll, Neves, John, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. Any person wishing to appear at a public hearing held by the council pursuant to any official notice thereof shall sign a register and list his or her address provided by the city secretary located outside the council chambers indicating the item on the agenda and that the person wishes to address. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes, and there shall be a cumulative limit of 60 minutes for all those speaking for an item on the agenda, and a like limit for all those speaking against the same item on the agenda. No group or organization shall be allowed more than three speakers on any agenda item. These limitations may be extended at the discretion of a majority vote of the council members. So item number nine is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing and turn it over to Mr. Steer to read into the record.
Mayor, council, good evening. This is to consider approval of a zoning change request to S. 1264C to allow a 1,200-square-foot restaurant with approximately 16 seats and pickup service located on 3.23 acres of land at 750 South Denton Tap, Suite 111. So this is located in the Braywood Shopping Center on the east side of South Denton Tap. The 35,000-square-foot shopping center was constructed in 1984 and is occupied with a variety of office, retail, personal service, and restaurant uses. This request is to allow a Firehouse Subs restaurant to occupy 1,200-square-foot lease space. Given that this lease space has never been used for food service and has residential adjacency, a special use permit is required. The proposed hours of operation for this restaurant are daily from 10:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. The floor plan indicates seating for 16. Restaurants are required to be parked at a ratio of one parking space per 100 square feet of gross floor area. Therefore, this would require 12 parking spaces. This retail center was granted a variance to the parking in 2014 based on the mix of uses and demonstrated parking needs. Since that time, Salata opened in a former bank, and a Wingstop opened in Suite 105. In their parking analysis, they indicate that there is adequate parking to meet their needs and show that it will be in compliance with the zoning ordinance and previous BOA exception of 50 parking spaces. The site has 176 required, and they are providing 179 parking spaces. The Firehouse Subs sign is proposed to be individually mounted channel letters on a red four-inch-deep backer panel with yellow returns. There's an oval-shaped black panel proposed with verbiage subs and yellow lettering. This design is allowed and will be different than the other signage in the center because it is a registered trademark. And this lease space has a width of 19 foot 6 inches, and the sign is proposed to be 19 and 1/2 square feet, which is in compliance with the sign ordinance. There's a close-up of it. We sent out 27 notices within 200 feet, and we sent out 175 courtesy notices within 800 feet. We did have one response in opposition within the 200 feet that was opposed to another food establishment close to their home that could potentially attract rats and mice. After a public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, 6 to 0, of special use permit 1264C Firehouse Subs, subject to, one, the hours of operation shall not exceed 10:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. daily; two, an external grease trap will be required, a minimum of 1,000 gallons; and, three, there will be additional comments at the time of a building permit. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions for Mr. Steer? Councilmember Neves.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I have a question about the hours of operation. Is that something that the applicant is requesting, that this is, or is that something that we're limiting on top of?
Correct. So that's what they're requesting, and that's part of the special use permit, just the hours of operation are included in the ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. The person that actually sent in the being opposed, you talked about two things that they didn't like, the fact that it's another food establishment, and then also talked about rat and mouse. Have we been getting, do you know, much complaints about rat and mouse around that area?
Not to my knowledge, not any more than usual.
Okay. And what's the usual?
Well, yeah, there hasn't been an elevated concern that's been brought to my attention.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hina Jose Smith.
Thank you. So I'm all for the, like, use of trademarks and distinguishing logos, but in that particular space, have we, with the other restaurants that are there, has there been, I guess what I was asking for is, has there been requests and denials for use of their trademarks and their signage? Like, have we been consistent? I know we, there's been a lot that's happened over the years when it comes to signage.
Right. So a few years ago, I don't know exactly how many, but we did change the ordinance to allow for registered logos. And so this is the first request, or Wingstop might have requested a logo, and I think they're using theirs as well.
Okay. I just wanted to understand for, like, consistency in, because I didn't know about Salata.
Actually, Salata did get their trademark, and then Victor's Wood Grill does have a trademark on their signage as well.
Okay. Just want to understand. Thank you.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and approve item nine.
We've still got a couple of more items. We have a public hearing to, we haven't let the public speak yet.
Okay. I didn't know that we had anybody.
Well, actually, we needed to allow the applicant to speak if he so desired.
My name is Ryan Franklin. I'm the franchisee for Firehouse Subs. I currently own and operate 10 locations. We've been trying to build a location in Capel actually for six years and have difficulty just used, basically tied to use restrictions and leases and what else not. So obviously, we'd love to have this opportunity and request your approval, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions if you have them.
And my name's Michael Hirschman. I'm with Eagle Braywood LP. We're the owners of this center and have owned that center since the late '80s. We appreciate your prior willingness to work with us. We are happy that Ryan is interested in our space, and I think he's an excellent operator, and I too am happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Council, any questions? Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. You just mentioned that you were trying for six years and you were having difficulty opening. Can you just kind of expand on that, what that difficulty you run into?
Essentially, our biggest challenge-
Essentially, our biggest challenge is the average landlord grants restrictions due to a use. So for example, you have the Jersey Mikes across the street from the center, and there previously was a space available, but due to their use restriction, which obviously mirrors our use, we can't get in. So that's the first issue. And then we also will have city restrictions, obviously, with parking, with, they had a variance in the past, which resolved that, or it's an issue with square footage, or the economics, or a combination of all three or four. So most people think that opening a restaurant is just finding a space and negotiating it and signing a lease, and it's just much more complicated than that when you have probably 15 to 20 sandwich users. And obviously, you know, I think the number of restaurants per capita in Dallas-Fort Worth compared to the nation is probably in the top five. So when we have an opportunity to build a restaurant, sometimes there's, it's difficult, to put it mildly.
Okay. Well, thank you for that information. Not, you know, we can't really do anything about the owner's perspective as to what they restrict, but we want it to be business-friendly, so that's why I wanted to hear what.
Oh, nothing, nothing on the city's side is, obviously, causes any issues. It's just, I'm normally working 10 to 12 deals a year as a master franchisee, trying to build out the Metroplex, and three or four usually make it across the finish line. So it's just, it's a challenge.
Thank you for the information.
You're welcome.
I was a little nervous when we headed down that, that path, but thank you for that answer.
No, nothing on your side of the equation.
Council, any other questions? Gentlemen, thank you for coming. Appreciate the application, and we'll be back with you in just a moment. We did not have anybody signed up to speak at the public hearing. So with that, Councilmember Hill, I believe you had a motion you were prepared to make.
I think it's still on the table, right? Just waiting for a second.
Point made. We have a motion, do we have a second? Councilmember Nevels has seconded. All in, all in favor?
Malan Kenoza Smith, Carol Nevels-Jen, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 10 is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing and ask that Mr. Steer read that into the record as well.
All right, thank you. This is item number 10. It's to consider approval of PD 250 R 27H Main Street Old Town, a zoning change request from PD 250 R 8H to PD 250 R 27H to add this property to the conceptual plan development for the Old Town Main Street project, creating seven additional lots, three being mixed-use office and residential, two mixed-use retail and residential, one retail building, and one common parking lot on .946 acres of land located southwest corner of Main Street and West Bethel Road. And before we get into the nuts and bolts of the zoning case this evening, first, Bob's going to give you some direction in terms of the parameters that you'll be considering for the case.
And then you're going to do the historic update.
Thank you, Mr. Steer. One of the things that I want to visit with you about as we approach this, and on the screen, there are two agenda items. This first agenda item is about the zoning. So you, as the legislative body of the city, have the right to grant or deny a change of zoning. In this case, they're trying to add land to the Old Town. So I wanted to go over with you what you should consider when you're talking about zoning. And we're not talking about what's going to ultimately may happen with the buildings if you grant the zoning. I want you to focus on the zoning issue. So the zoning issue that you have before you tonight is, under our ordinance, as well as under the state law, is that you are to consider the height, number of stories, percentage of lots occupied, the size of the yards, courts and open space, and density, location, and use of the buildings, and whether those uses are for business, industrial, residential, or other purposes under our zoning act. Also, you could consider for the use in this, and since we do have Old Town consideration, is that you have areas of what they call historic, cultural, architectural importance and significance, and they can regulate the construction, reconstruction, alteration, the raising of any buildings or other structures. So what we're here to talk about first, and agenda item number 10, is what the appropriate land use is going to be, what the density is, what the height of the buildings, the configuration of the buildings, the amount of open space, the parking, and those items. If you decide in favor of that zoning application, then you move to the next question, and what then becomes of any structures that are on the property now, if you approve the site plan, when you make your motion to approve the zoning and it receives four more votes. I'm not suggesting to you what you need to do, I just want to explain to you why and how we're going to try to address the issues. Once there's been a decision made with the zoning, if the zoning is granted, and a motion to grant the zoning is approved, then we'll move to the issue of what then happens with any structures that are on the building. That obligation under our ordinance exists with or without a zoning change. That's why we separated them. So then we'll get to that issue. If the zoning is denied, or an affirmative motion does not receive four votes and thereby denied, then you don't need to reach the next question of what happens to the building, because there's no other application for that before you tonight, and there's no specific notice if the current owner retained possession of the property and then wanted to address issues with regard to the, to the current structures on the building. So do you have any questions before we get to the presentation?
Councilmember Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hager, for the explanation. Let me clarify one, one thing to make sure I understand. We're separating the two. However, the building is addressed as a condition to the zoning case. So I guess, can you help?
If you make a decision to zone this property and approve the site plan as submitted, then you've made a decision that something needs to occur with the current building because it's not incorporated in the site plan.
Okay.
Then the next question is, should it be removed, or should it be demolished, which is what your obligation is under the ordinance to make that decision.
And that's the piece that got moved to the next item, right?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hager.
Okay. So we wanted to give you an overview of the historic district and how the plans of the area have changed and expanded, and give a chronology of how developments occurred in the area. The purpose is to show you the evolution of the area with comprehensive planning, the zoning amendments, and how intentional we've been with each of the prior detailed plan developments approvals, each of which required a detailed site plan, detailed landscape plan, and elevations. In May 1996, a comprehensive master plan for the city was adopted. This designated approximately 68 acres for the historic area. The focus of the plan was to preserve the flavor of Capel as it once was. It called for Bethel and Capel roads to remain as two-lane roadways with buildings oriented close to the road. It also called for structures to be exempt from masonry requirements, called for streetscaping design that encouraged pedestrian activity. In July 1997, the zoning ordinance was amended to include a historic district overlay, which allowed for asphalt paving and wood siding with an SUP to encourage development in the area that did not resemble the typical suburban development. This area was 63 acres and was different than the original master plan. In 2002, after significant public input, the old Capel master plan was accepted by the city council. The boundaries of the district changed to include street frontage on the south portion of South Capel Road and Grapevine Springs Park. Areas designated for residential, mixed-use with office concentration on the first floor, mixed-use with retail and service concentration on the first floor, institutional use, parks, and open space were all components of the plan. In May 2003, council amended the land use component of the 1996 comprehensive plan to reflect what was shown in the old Capel master plan. In December of 2000, council had approved the Capel Service Center on the south side of the district prior to acceptance of the master plan. Then in 2000, January 2004, we saw the first development occur of 19 townhomes on the north end of the district. In May 2005, the historic overlay district containing various base zonings was changed to a straight H district, and the current design guidelines were adopted, which included standards taken from the old Capel master plan. This was a 110-acre zoning change and text amendment that set up design standards and special regulations for the district. September 2005, the historic district was expanded to include 3.2 acres along the south side of Bethel Road to Freeport to include the Hard Eight BBQ site. Then later in September, two medical office buildings were approved for the Old Town Medical Center. In January 2007, the historic district zoning and comprehensive plan was expanded to include the Old Town Main Street Capel development formerly known as Carter Crowley. Then we saw five detailed plan developments be approved, of which council approved the demolition of the gas station and auto repair garage to make way for road infrastructure improvements for the Main Street Capel development, and approval of the relocation of the Kirkland House and replica vineyard drugstore to form Heritage Park. In March 2011, the 2030 comprehensive master plan was approved for the entire city. This incorporated the old Capel master plan with the new boundaries. The 135 acres included the Old Town Main Street development site, which the zoning was approved in April 2011 for the conceptual plan development. Then in 2011 and 2012, we saw 11 detailed plan developments get approved. February 2013, we had a plan development amendment which allowed for administrative approval of certain detailed plans within the Main Street project, provided they met the detailed plan, or the conceptual plans already approved. We had two other detailed plan developments approved that year, and I wanted to point out that the Capel deli was demolished and a new restaurant was built in its place. The applicant agreed to preserve the front awning and incorporated it on the design. In August 2014, the comprehensive plan was amended to include 2.45 acres on the west side of Hammond, which contained 18 patio home units. Between March 2013 and 2015, there were eight administrative approvals of detailed plan developments that matched the, the conceptual plan. Then late 2014 through May 2015, we saw three detailed plan developments gain approval. Between October 15th and 2017, we had four detailed plan developments approved, one of which was moving the Enfeld House to the Heritage Park site. Between 2017 and 2020, we saw seven new detailed plan developments approved. Most recently, we have two mixed-use proposals and a five live-work unit proposal that have been approved. In conclusion, this, this provides you with a comprehensive overview of the historic district and how the plans evolved over time, and how the developments occurred in the area over the last 25 years. Now I'll turn it over to Mary, who will get into the nuts and bolts of the, the case
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Mary Prom Boswell, Senior Planner. I'm here to discuss the zone change request before you this evening. So the site is located on the southwest corner of West Bethel and Main Street. It's just under an acre in size. It's proposed to have seven lots containing six new buildings, five of which will be mixed-use, one retail building, and a parking lot. So when we say mixed-use, what we mean is that the commercial and residential uses have separate entrances and can have separate occupancies. So this is different than the live-work units. Buildings one and two, which are mixed-use, will front West Bethel Road. Building three is located at the corner of Main Street and Bethel, and will be commercial on both floors. The remaining buildings, four, five, and six, will front Main Street and also be mixed-use. These will have a similar spacing as the existing buildings to the south. The buildings, as I mentioned, will be a combination of office, residential, retail residential, and one full retail building. The residential portion will be located on the second floor, will have two garage spaces on the ground level, access from the rear of the lot. Lot 7X, which is the parking lot, is not develop, is not developable and will be solely used as a parking lot. This is part of the PD conditions. A sidewalk will be built along Bethel Road. Connecting sidewalks will be constructed from the proposed Lot 7X, the parking lot, to the street frontages via four-foot sidewalk easement located in between each of the buildings. No signs have been proposed with this development. Parking for the site will be a combination of garage parking, on-street parking on Main Street, parking on proposed Lot 7X, which will be required with the construction of the first building on this site, and 28 parking spaces from the existing public parking lot nearby, for a total of 74 parking spaces as required. The site is proposed to be added to the conceptual plan development for the Old Town Main Street project and existing POA, or Property Owners Association, for maintenance of the parking lot and amenities. So in terms of landscaping, the existing site does have some hackberry and crape myrrals on-site, which will be removed, as well as a bur oak, which is in poor condition. They will require a tree removal permit to remove the trees. There are also some hackberry trees that will be removed to provide access to this site through the existing city parking lot located on the south. So the applicant will have to coordinate with the City Parks Department for that. Overall, the developer will be planting additional over-story trees on-site, as you can see with this representation. Per the landscape plans provided, additional cedar elm, Chinese pistachio, lacebark elm, and Texas red oak trees will be planted throughout the site. The yards will have a variety of landscaping, including trees, grasses, shrubs, ground covers, with a focus being on the front yards. The parking lot, Lot 7X, will also have trees located in the islands and western perimeter. The building lots have a range of 32% to 36% landscaping. Per the developer, the POA will maintain all landscaping on-site. So what we have here is renderings of the proposed buildings. So the development will contain six buildable lots that share common design elements and materials. They are in compliance with the historic design, historic district design guidelines. Each of the buildings will be two-story, with heights varying from roughly 27 feet to just under 35 feet. The material board identifies the color palette to be used on the buildings within the development, and is represented in the renderings that you see before you. There's a common shingle, brick, and stone will be used in the structures, as well as building trims and accent colors. The siding and trims will be cement fiberboard, lap siding, and a shingle-look siding with wood or insulated steel front doors patented to match the trim. The two-car garage doors will be decorative, insulated metal, and the arts and crafts style. More detailed information is provided on the elevations themselves for buildings one through six, and the materials and colors proposed, and those were in your packets. A rendering with different views, we'll take a look at. A rendering with different views, we'll take a look at next, and the colors are shown are from the Sherman Williams Exterior Historic Preservation Palette. So these are additional renderings of the development from different view corridors. The bottom center ones show the existing versus the proposed view north on Main Street. So the old Copel master plan was done in 2002 and states that it uses a mix of zoning that will accommodate a rich variety of uses. It states that the land use plan shown should remain flexible to adapt to changing market Mixed use, the retail and service concentration is identified in red. The plan states, "Retail and service uses should be concentrated in the core of old Copel along Bethel and Copel Roads," identified again by the red color. "Uses such as specialty retail are critical to generating pedestrian traffic in the study area." In the case of multi-story buildings, office and residential uses are appropriate for upper floors. Being a mixed-use category, uses such as office and residential are permitted. Again, this slide here is taken from the master plan as well and represents a visual simulation of what they had in mind when they wrote the plan. So on the left was the existing condition, a Copel Road looking south to Bethel Road intersection. So some of this has changed, as Matt mentioned. The gas service station in blue is no longer there, and the house at the end of the road has been moved. To the right is the proposed condition, what they look to have happen in this corridor So we did send out letters, seventeen notices within two hundred feet, as required by state law, and another hundred and forty notices within the eight hundred feet that we do as a courtesy. In terms of responses, we had two reply letters back in favor, three in opposition. We did receive other emails from people. Forty-one responses, twenty-two in favor, seventeen opposed, two with questions. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval, five to one, of the requests with the following conditions. One, there may be additional comments during detailed engineering review. Two, the final plat is required and cannot be filed until the buildings have been removed and zoning is approved. Three, tree removal permit will be required prior to construction. Four, to update the quantity of the proposed plants on the plans. Five, to coordinate with the Parks Department for the removal of the off-site trees and relocation of irrigation south of Lot 76 to allow for access via the city's parking lot. Six, that Lot 7X Block A, Main Street, Old Town addition shall only be used for parking. Seven, that Lot 7X Block A, Main Street, Old Town addition will not have street frontage but will be accessible via an access easement, which will be required between Lot 7X, Block A, Main Street, Old Town, and the city of Copel. Eight, the existing fifteen parking spaces on Main Street in front of this development shall be counted for this development. Nine, the existing twenty-eight parking spaces in the Old Town area shall be counted towards this development. Ten, the POA, Property Owners Association, shall be responsible for maintenance of the common area, proposed Lot 7X, Main Street, Old Town addition, and all landscaping. Eleven, that all signage must comply with the H District ordinance requirements. Twelve, Building Three will not have any residential uses but may have a commercial occupancy on the second floor. Thirteen, maximum building height shall not exceed thirty-five feet above finished floor. Fourteen, the POA shall maintain all amenities, including benches, trash receptacles, bicycle racks, sidewalk easements between buildings, et cetera. Fifteen, the POA shall maintain the private drainage easement. Sixteen, the development must either join the Old Town Main Street POA or create a POA which will be responsible for amenities and conditions listed above. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission added number seventeen, which will be discussed as part of the next item on your agenda, should this item be approved. So seventeen is the demolition or removal of the building shall require City Council consideration. That is the end of my presentation. Available for questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Mrs., Ms. Perron or Mr. Steer? Councilmember Nevels.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I appreciate it. Question about, with the parking lot being on the, the proposed parking lot being on the back of the, of the site, what sort of signage or indication is there for people to know there is parking back there and to prevent crowding and things like that?
So, we haven't discussed signage, but obviously it'll be available for people who are going to, you know, go to that site. I would think that most people would almost think it's a continuation of the other parking So in terms of crowding, there's about a hundred-plus parking spots on, in the Old Town area in excess of what is required, so I don't see that as an issue.
Is there any existing signage out there right now? I'm trying to remember and I can't.
I honestly don't know.
Yeah, all right, no worries. It's not a test. Thank you.
Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Boswell. One of the conditions that the PNC had put was the, I guess, the POA. I guess this is a parking agreement, right?
No, the parking agreement is with the city.
Is it just with the city?
Because the city lot.
Because they're actually using, it's going to be overlapping with other businesses in that area. Is that correct or no?
So that is a public parking lot, so any of the businesses can use that parking lot. It's to bring them into this PD, and so they'd be paying dues towards the POA that would help with whatever costs are associated that the POA has to incur.
Okay.
And maintenance, they would do the landscaping, other items.
So what is the stage at this time with the POA agreement? Have we, has that been already in, is that in progress or have that been discussed?
So to my knowledge, they have, they have had discussions with the POA, and they are, from my understanding, in favor of this being added to the POA.
Okay. And then, if I remember correctly, one of the, the PNC, it was a five-one, what was it?
Yes, sir. Five, five to one.
And then what was the, the post reasoning?
So I believe Chairman Haas voted in opposition of the request. I believe he was looking at density.
Okay. And what about the density? Can you explain that about what that issue was?
So I, so I'm gonna, I'm assuming that he thought it was a little too dense for, for what he was looking at. I'm not sure if he was meaning density or massing, but, you know, we did look at density, and it is within the other mixed uses that we have in Old Town. It does fall within those parameters of the other mixed uses.
Do we have that ratio? As that's, I think previously in other development, we had been provided with the density ratios.
I'll show you the slide. Okay, I'm not sure what this is. Hold on. Where's my other stuff? Oh, there we go. There we go. So if we look, if we look at the Main Street project, which we're discussing, it's five point eight-nine units per acre is the density. When we look at two of the other projects that we approved most recently, Let It Shine, the mixed use, and the building just south of that, Let It Shine is about five point zero nine, and the building just south of that was seven point nine seven four. So if you look at the other different residential projects, they are, you know, range anywhere from ten point eight-six units per acre up to about thirteen units per acre. Other live-work units further up on Copel Road are about seven point three five, seven point one, and eight point seven.
Okay, thank you. You've mentioned that with the notices that were put out, you've received some yeses and nos.
Correct.
And was there any reasoning as to whether, say, what the reasoning was for nos?
Most of the people who were in opposition were essentially looking to maintain the character of Old Town, that these were buildings that were, you know, on the historic survey, and they wished to, you know, keep that as part of the character of Old Town. Those people that were in favor, most of them were in favor of, you know, something new being there, businesses being there that would, you know, both bring people downtown and provide another tax base for the city.
And do you have information on hand as to how long that lot currently, I guess the church, right? How long that's been in non-use?
I'll have to let the applicant answer that question. I know they've owned the property since eighty-three.
Okay. Since eighty-three?
Yes, sir. But they bought it from the church.
Okay. And then, and then other parts that were still being used currently?
I don't have that information. The applicant can probably answer that for you.
And as far as the, I guess, the plant, the proposal, is this, is this comparable to others, develop, other development that we have act, that came before us or even PNC and have, is it pretty similar?
Yes, some of the buildings are, you know, similar. It's representative of what, you know, I think if you look at this picture, which gives a simulation of what they were looking for, you know, the building on the right is actually on the corner across the street. So if you look at that, you can see that they're looking for something with some massing, especially on the corners, to provide, you know, both, provide some synergy for what's already out there. So it wouldn't be out of place with all the other buildings that are there.
Okay. And I might have missed it, but what are the sizes of these H buildings?
Sure. I have that. So Building One is roughly forty-seven hundred and sixty-six square feet with about twenty-one hundred and fifty square feet on the first level, twenty-six hundred square feet on the second level. Building Two is four thousand square feet. Building Three is forty-five hundred and sixty-two square feet. Building Four is four thousand fourteen square feet. Building Five is forty-three hundred and seventy-six square feet, and Building Six is forty-three hundred and seventy-six square feet. So roughly two stories, more or less, half and half.
For the ones with the garages?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a restriction set, just like, I think, prior plan development, we had some restrictions set as to what it can and cannot be used for? Is that something that the PNC had taken into consideration? Because I think that one of the issues that it had was, one of the, some of the garages were being used for, I guess, training purpose per se?
Okay, so this is not a live-work situation. This is, the ground floor is going to be occupied by one tenant, and then the second floor is residential. So the garage is meant for the residents to have, to park their vehicles in.
Okay. So it'll be completely separate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And those second floors?
Yes, sir.
We have no idea whether that's going to be two-bedroom or three-bedroom or?
I don't have that.
Okay.
No, sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Boswell. Number, item, condition number twelve, can you walk through that one just a little bit for me? So it says, "The retail building can have commercial use upstairs." So what sort, I guess, what's sort of behind the idea of the second floor commercial use or what would constitute that commercial use, I guess?
Okay, so the difference, the difference being that Buildings One, Two, Four, Five, and Six all have a garage, which is, you know, kind of a two-parking space requirement for the residential uses. Building Three, which is the corner lot, is proposed to be just retail, both floors. It doesn't have any garage, it doesn't have, you know, even a space where you could drive into a garage.
Okay. So the commercial use upstairs, what?
Commercial, meaning retail, commercial.
Like office?
That one's a retail building.
Okay. I was just trying to differentiate. It looks like it could be retail upstairs or commercial.
Yeah, so.
The way I'm reading it.
Yeah, I apologize.
I mean, I understand the whole building is supposed to be retail, is the idea initially, but?
Right. So on this one, this exhibit, there's two different shades. So One, Two, and Six are proposed to be office residential, while Three, Four, and Five will have retail.
Okay.
And Four and Five will have retail residential.
Okay. On your density map that you showed just a second ago, can you flip back to that right quick? Is that possible?
So I apologize.
So we have all these examples. How about the density of the properties right next to, either to the west or the south of this development, or even over, across the street? Do we know what the density, do we have a similar density as those buildings, like where George is and such?
No. We went with, trying to do just the residential, so I apologize, we didn't do the just commercial portion.
I see. Okay. So that's why those are not listed on there? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? I believe the applicant is in the audience. Would you like to have anything to say?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mary. You did an awesome job. You just cut my time in half.
So, my name is Chris Collins. I'm a local resident, have been here for about twenty years, own a Keller Williams office in Old Town. Last time I was here, we did a live-work development, had a little bit of conflict. We got that resolved and moved forward. That project is now underway. We have the street parking, the sidewalks on South Copel Road completed, moving forward with that. We have three of the five under contract to sell, so that project is doing well. That project is what spun this off. So I'm in the area, I'm looking around going, this would be an excellent opportunity to continue what we did on South Copel Road to the corner of Bethel and Main. So met with the Chaddicks, put the property under contract, met with Matt, and the city planning team came up. This one was a lot more, a lot more intense in what it took. A couple of the questions that came up, I would like to go ahead and address. I think Matt did an excellent job explaining the history. There were two obstacles. It was where are we going to park and what are we going to do with the buildings? And so the history- A couple of the questions that came up, I would like to go ahead and address. I think Matt did an excellent job explaining the history. There were two obstacles. It was where are we going to park, and what are we going to do with the buildings? And so the history of Capel, Matt did a great job recanting. It was on my notes, I'm going to say it again. Buildings that were, needed to be moved so that the progressive Old Town could continue to progress were moved to Heritage Park. Some of them were demolished. When it came time for Jay and the Capel Deli, the building was wore out. It was a, that's just what it was. So Jay was required to repurpose the materials to keep the same look moving forward. So when this project started originally, I sat down with the Historic Society with two options. Let's find a place to move them, that would be a great opportunity. The other was, if that's not possible, if the structural integrity of the church, because of its condition, it cannot be moved, let's repurpose. So if you haven't been in there in a while, the history that I'm familiar with, according to the Grace Point Church, the First Baptist Church of Carroll, I'm going to say Carrollton because that's where I went as a kid, in Capel, was meeting there up until the early 70s. They left, the next tenant was the Capel Chamber of Commerce. They were there from approximately 2010, trying to remember the first time I was there, until 2015. Capel Chamber had an opportunity to buy the building after doing the studies on what it would cost to purchase a building, renovate the building, bring it up to meet their needs. It was cheaper to buy the building where they're currently located. So the Capel Chamber vacated sometime around 2015, and the main church has been vacated and vacant since. The idea of moving the church versus repurposing it, the repurposing idea was, there's some really cool materials that are still usable. There's ceiling fans, there's light fixtures, the hardwood floors, there's a wainscoting, cedar wainscoting around all the walls, about 36 inches up. There are the old windows, the interior doors and trim. What we thought was our concept of repurposing was to pull those materials out and repurpose them in the front porches that are required to be on these buildings, adding a commemorative plaque. The old ceiling fans, the light fixtures, we can replace the panes inside the wooden windows, have the wooden windows repurposed with, um, argon-friendly, the dual-pane windows. More expensive to do that than to build a new one, to buy a new one, but it just seemed like the way we could preserve on the front porches of these buildings, the look, put commemorative plaques stating that that's where the materials came from. We thought we were going to move forward with that idea, here we are today. So, Mr. Neves, you had asked about parking. So the parking issue that had come up was if, since this property was not originally part of the master plan, that we had to park on-site, which just wasn't going to happen. That's where we came up with the idea of grafting into the Old Town master plan, as well as the POA, Property Owners Association. Therefore, it would be congruent in the way it's maintained. I talked with Frank from the local diner, he directed me to Sean, the current president. My understanding, the board has had a conversation, and they welcomed the project, so we've got that covered. After that came, um, the buildings, the repurposing, we've talked about that, but when you talked about parking, the parking in the back and adjoining the city lot that's already there, when you come into, on Main Street and hit the stop sign at the Twisted Route, there is a directional parking sign showing additional parking to the right. Those parking lots will be adjoined, so that's how we plan on directing the traffic. John, I believe your question about density. In the planning and zoning hearing, the questions of density came up. Well, we had sat down, Greg Frank and I, and what, what the chairman was concerned about was the rendering looking large. There's two reasons that the buildings are the sizes they are. After meeting with the city attorney in one of our planning meetings, he had said that if the building was designed with a 15, I'm just throwing these numbers out, a 1,500 square foot footprint, and the end user needed 1,800, we would be right back here again, amending. So his recommendation was to make them as large as possible. So that we met the density, which, as you know, last time, that was the issue, so we focused on that. What, what I believe was, came out of the conversation about density, was not so much the size of the buildings, as the way it's going to look from the streetscape in, in not having, in having a building, and I'm just throwing numbers out, 25-foot tall and then having a 30-foot tall building next to it. And so Greg Frank and I sat down and addressed that so that the buildings coming on Main Street would graduate. One of the things that the city really emphasized as we were doing this design was the corner building of Bethel and Main. They wanted a wow building. They wanted something that would be a head-turning stop. The idea of having a wraparound front porch to kind of blend in from Founder's Crossing on Bethel to the corner, not realizing whether the building is facing Main Street or facing Bethel, and then turning the corner and then graduating down. So we've redrawn those sizes in the elevation height, so that it would be more congruent in a flow. As for the size, upon building permit, if someone needs 1,500 square feet and the building is currently on, with the first floor of 2,000 square feet, we can adjust down without having to come back for exceptions through council. Other than that, I've been working with the planning and zoning, we've worked with Mary and Matt. Mary and Matt have done an awesome job explaining the project. I believe the economics haven't been addressed. Currently, with DCAD being down, it's kind of hard to get some exact numbers, but we did go fishing. What we came up with is the current seven buildings bring in a property tax revenue of somewhere around 68,000. With the estimated cost of the current buildings that we build, the six, the new buildings, along with the six existing structures that are there, and their current tax rates, we expect the tax revenue from the project completed to be somewhere around $125,000 to $130,000 versus the 68 that it is currently. Trying to think if there's anything else. I know that we've, I had given everyone a packet through the, through Ashley Owen. I didn't know if y'all had a chance to see that or read that, some of the opposition or things that we've had to deal with, and so just wanted to make you all aware of those things.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Collins. So you mentioned the corner building particularly being sort of the entry point into Old Town or into Main Street. What type of retail do you really envision? What do you think, what, what do you think would be attracted to that building, first floor, second floor, anything? What's sort of your thoughts?
So the big question, the elephant in the room, is a restaurant. So part of the reason it is zoned the way it is versus zoned just coming in asking for a restaurant is because, it's my understanding from the conversations we've had, that if a restaurant tenant wanted that building, that all we would be looking at is a change in that one building's use, which would require additional parking places, and we already have additional parking places once we're drafted into the master plan. And so therefore, we could convert that to a restaurant building. The design is kind of, you were asking the questions and earlier about the building in the second floor. And so that's kind of the idea, that that building, if we had a restaurant that was looking for it, it would be a great spot. That then throws in the economics of what all's been going on with other restaurants. The size of the building and the location, I believe, creates an opportunity for someone to be successful in that area. Retail, it could be a conglomerate of, you know, things.
Okay.
As you know, living on the street, we deal with the pedestrian traffic. We had the conversations about the water bottles that we give away at my real estate office on South Capel Road. We're still maintaining spring and summer, somewhere around seven cases of bottled water through our front flower bed where we have a bottle, a refrigerator for water, and so the pedestrian traffic is constant.
The retail units, ignoring the corner piece, but the other, I think there's three other retail units, is that correct? They are all facing Main. Is there, is that correct? Am I remembering correctly?
Yes, sir.
Is there any method to the madness why they are facing Main and not facing?
It was an accident.
Okay.
So the idea of the master plan was that we would create retail traffic through that area. There are the smaller buildings, and I'm going to get the buildings messed up, I think it's 5 and 6, on Main Street. We have been speaking with someone who is currently on Main Street and would be a neighbor to the first building, number 6. Talked with them today, they're still interested in the building, and they would be a similar business to Livestream. There's no contract, no, just talk. The other one is to continue that traffic, the Georges, the flow to the restaurants that are there, the new Mexican restaurant that's starting to open, to have the retail on Main Street versus having the retail on Bethel, which could create other pedestrian issues coming into a retail from Bethel. Founder's Crossing, all three buildings were built, occupied, they are office buildings. When Bennett and his wife put their building up for sale, Becky, that building was, they took it off the market because a friend wanted it, and it was immediately occupied again. All three of those are businesses. It would also help our parking, that the businesses would be coming in and parking in the back that would use those, so.
Okay, and last thing, are the built, so what's the timeline on the six buildings? Are they, will they be built spec or any of them, or are you just building as they get contracted? If someone wants to?
This project's probably going to move a little slower than the live works. The economy interrupted our live-work project. As soon as we started moving dirt, we started getting the activity. This project's going to require, at our expense, lowering all of the overhead utilities underground, and that is going to be our big issue with moving forward. The timeline would be to put the parking lot in the rear first, and then start the buildings on the end that won't be affected, which would be Main Street.
Okay.
Because everything on Bethel Road is going to be disrupted by the utilities going underground. It's a major event, because those are transmission lines, not just service lines.
After the, well, but after the, say, let's say the utilities get addressed, I mean, eventually that, that gets addressed and everything, will the buildings all be built out, or will you be waiting for a buyer before you build them out? Is that, what's the idea?
We're, we're planning on moving forward with the shells.
Okay.
As, as we can.
Okay.
Due to that construction. The first two buildings that we're looking at selling, that there's talk about, are on Main Street.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel, any other questions? Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a couple of things that you said, I just want to get a clarification on. When you were speaking, one of the things, you said something about adjusting down on the size. Can you, what, what does that mean?
Okay, so part of the development side of the equation is if you built a single-size building, it's not one-size-fits-all. And so not knowing exactly what the businesses' needs are going to be until they draft their finish-out, the ability to make the building smaller. They may not need the second floor finished out, they may only be interested in the first floor. For example, the restaurant in the corner, should it be a restaurant? They may not be interested in the second floor being finished out, they may be looking for a patio on the front. And so the building might not come to the full, have square footage of 4,000, it may be 28.
Okay. So if I understand correctly, it's not where you might have that one building and you might have two businesses inside, that's not the idea, correct?
No, sir. I mean, it's hard to regulate what goes on once the building's sold. The other project, we had the parking issue come up in the garage, that was a big issue. So we addressed it in the HOA documents, that the garages could not be used for business use. I think that's what you were referring to with your question. And so our intent, I run an investment fund called Hawkeye Capital, and the purpose of Hawkeye Capital is to convert business tenants to real property owners, so that they're building equity in their business, not their landlord's pocket. And so what we're looking for, owner-operator businesses that are going to fit the Old Town model. We're not here to sell to an investment company who wants to come put tenants in them. That's not what our goal is. Our goal is to have owners occupied buildings where the owner is the one doing business in the building.
Okay, and then the second thing you, this is again, as you were speaking, I just wrote down some of them. The other thing you mentioned about, you had some discussion about the removal of the current building that's there. At whose cost?
So as far as I know at this time, I'm the only one that's pulled the checkbook out, as was written in the letter that I wrote to you concerning the buildings. If they are removed or repurposed, obviously, we're absorbing 100% of that cost. I've been working with the Historic Society on what could be done with the buildings. There was a proposal put together that you guys are all aware of, and so part of the letter that I've written to you is a commitment that we won't do anything on our end of this development until after May 1st, so that we can have intelligent conversation, that we can come up with what to do with the buildings and what's in the best interest for the city of Capel.
Okay, so the cost as to who bears it has not really come up then?
If the buildings, if the buildings are repurposed, is 100% on me.
Okay.
If the buildings are moved, I'm willing to contribute to the move, but not bear 100% of the cost. It's not economical to develop the property that way.
So when you say you're going to, if it's repurposed, and what is the chance of repurposing that building?
It's pretty high. I mean, we've, we've looked at the buildings, I've been in the buildings when I was a member of the chamber and sat on, as a chairman on one of the committees, and so been through it with the current owner, and the idea of pulling out the doors fully encased with their trim and using them in the new buildings is what we're doing.
Okay, let me, let me ask you the last question that I had. You mentioned also, when you were talking, there were some conflicts with residents in the past when you had submitted plan development.
Yes.
Right. Is there any?
So.
Currently?
So in, in the, in the previous plan development, you guys moved to hold and not make a vote. I went, sat down with the people that were in opposition, we completely redrew the site plan, and then when we came back, the people that had spoken opposed had withdrawn their opposition, and in fact, came and spoke on behalf of that project. In this case, I have opened up my home, my office, we had a Frito-Pie buffet for anybody that wanted to come and stop by and visit with solutions. Had a very interesting conversation with a guy that dropped in, one person dropped in and asked what a Frito-Pie was, so that was a very interesting conversation. The second one came in about 8:30, and he's a plumber here in Capel. He had read a bunch of the information online, saw the invitation to come talk about this. He sat down at my table and basically said, "I just want to tell you my heart for the church." And his response was really simple. He said, "I was baptized in that church when I was seven years old." And I said, "That's amazing. About the same time you were baptized in that church, I was baptized at the First Baptist Church of Carrollton, Old Town Carrollton." And we had a conversation, he goes, "I just can't believe you're going to demolish the buildings." And my immediate response was, "I've never said I'm demolishing the buildings." And he goes, "Well, that's what's on the internet." And I said, "No, here's the truth, and this is why my door's open, it's why you're sitting here. My intention has never been to demolish these buildings, ever. It's been to move them if possible and repurpose the materials." When I explained the repurposing, he immediately completely changed his demeanor, and he goes, "Then I can trust you to do the right thing for Capel." And I said, "Yep, we've done it in the past, and we're doing it again."
Okay, I, so there was no conflict with residents, is that what I'm hearing?
There is a conflict, or this room wouldn't be full right now.
Okay.
All right. This one I could not resolve over Frito-Pie.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, do you have any other questions for Mr. Collins? Seeing none, thank you very much, but stick around.
Yeah, I'm not going far.
We do have, we do have a number of people that have signed up to speak for the public hearing. Their names will be called in the order that they signed up. We will be hearing for those that have registered to speak in favor of the proposal first, and our first person on the list is Jeff Berger. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Jeff Berger, 465 Travis Street. I live about 100 yards from this particular property. And the reason I came over today is I have listened to him, seen the drawings, the renderings, and the people that were there seem to be in general consensus it was a good project. I think he's put a lot of work into it, in that he has sat down and the way he explained it, every position, point that the city brought up that he accommodated and worked with the city. There's another reason I was here, and this is more emotional, is an email, a text, was put out, or Facebook, that was passed was put out, or Facebook, that was passed on to our porch hoppers, we have our own Facebook, and it's, and it claimed that, essentially, it said, "The developer's going to go in there and knock down the church building, it's supposed to be historical, this would be a travesty, and he's doing it for profit." And that's not what I found out when I was talking to him. However, if that goes away, you're going to have this quote-unquote "church" that I've heard will be, to do anything with it would be $800,000 to rehab that church and make it a function. Otherwise, in my opinion, and I'm not a developer, I'm a property tax consultant, I've dealt with developers, that it would just sit vacant and continue to dilapidate. I, I like the pictures that you've shown, the way he has worked with the city, and I think a lot of my neighbors do in Old Town, so that's why I wanted to speak for it, and mainly because I think that he has taken the time, he's incorporated. I really personally don't see how that, that, it would probably be repurposed, but I'm not the developer. But he didn't come in here and say, "We're just going to knock it down," that I thought was an allegation of his character, that most, a lot of developers do that, and that's not him, and that's not this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, signed up is Lucy Hossi. Welcome, and please state your name and address.
Good evening. Lucy Haas, 744 Hammond, Capel, Old Town Capel. I am here just to show support to my neighbors, show support to Mr. Collins. I attended, he had an open house last night, and, and we are new to Capel, my husband and I. We moved into the area in July, and we are just, we, we came to the area looking for a home, and we were on the other side of Capel, and we drove across the street and came across Old Town Capel, and instantly, we fell in love. We went into it, and we drove around, and we're like, "This is where we want to be." Didn't know that for the past 10 years, that lot has been empty. I am for pro seeing it developed. I want to see a little bit more of moving it. It does seem a little stagnant in that particular spot, but I'm, I'm excited to see what happens in the next 10 years, and I do hope that you would pass this and, and drive a little bit more into the area. Just, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and welcome to Capel. Next on the list is Rick Cashman. Good evening, welcome, and state your name and address, please.
Hi, thank you. Excuse me. Rick Cashman, 612 Englewood Court in Capel. I, I'm a big fan of growth. I'm also very sensitive to history and the paths, but I feel, being in Capel for the last, excuse me, couple of decades, this particular area town, area of town, I think could be a, a significant anchor for what we need for the next couple of decades. And I, I'm just becoming familiar with the plans, but based on what I see, I definitely feel very positive, very bullish about what can happen. Some of the things that, one of the things that, that Chris mentioned that I thought was very interesting, was the repurposing, but not only that, potential for even retrofitting some of the older buildings. But I think perhaps the problem with that is the condition of the buildings. So, I think that moving forward potentially, being considerate to what is there is important, but also being considerate to what needs to happen in the future is vital as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next is David Haas.
Good evening, David Haas, 744 Hammond Street, just on the corner. I would reiterate what my wife said about the, the community, drawn to the, the charm of it, and, and that corner seems to be stale, frankly. I, I do, I'm, I respect the history, I respect the church, I, I think Mr. Collins has more, easily laid out a very reasonable accommodations to, to that, to that end. So, so I, thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight, and thank you for your comments. Next is Greg Zoller.
Hello, Greg Zoller, 319 Hampton Court, Capel. A lot of really good thought and work has gone into the Old Capel Plan, and it's an amazing plan. That area ultimately is going to be wonderful, but we haven't reached critical mass. I'm not going to do this, but if I asked everybody here, "When the last time you went to Old Town was?", that might support my story, that we need more that will bring people to that area of town, keep them there, and have them interact with that area. I'm convinced that this proposal, in its mixed-use configuration, will help toward that, that addition of thoughtful mass, if you will. I, I would invite the council not to worry too much about density. If you think of historic areas, they tend to be a little more dense, that's what creates the walkability, the community, you know, typical suburbias all spread out. Having things a little more dense actually creates that, that sense of community. If you look at other historic areas, what I like about this proposal is that the architecture is respectful of the architectural style that's there, and it's different than some of the other historical areas in, in the Dallas area. So, it makes Old Town Capel unique and different. So, that, that's one of the reasons I like this, this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next on the list is Alan Knoll.
Hello, I'm Alan Knoll, 522 Country Lane. Looking back at the historical areas, it brought back a lot of memories. So, my wife and I moved here 35 years ago, right after college. We've lived in four places in Capel, we own three houses in Capel now, one's in Old Capel. We purchased during COVID for our son when he came to visit for a place to hang out. And I remember, when we first moved here, we, we loved the location, my wife was going to graduate school up at North Texas, and I was working downtown. And we thought, "Well, we'll need schools one of these days, they've got great schools, great highway access." But the thing we really didn't like about it, there were, there was really no restaurants to speak of. I remember when they built the Taco Bell, I was so excited, I didn't, did drive over to 35 and Sandy Lake to get a taco. And we've almost moved from Capel 10 times. A good friend of mine really came up with the Old Town Capel concept, and he talked to me about it, and I told him he, "I'm a real estate investor," and I said, "Seems kind of nutty, but, you know, hey, give it a shot." I think what they hit on is, is the style of the architecture is what makes it magical, and that's what brings people in. I, I don't think any particular building is the key, it's, it's the overall style, it's the density, it's bringing all these pieces together. We've been involved, our company's been involved in, in a mixed-use project called the West Village in Uptown, it's probably one of the most successful projects in Dallas. It's got the same thing, we've got old Texas classical architecture, it's very high density, it works great, we've got a mix of office and retail and residential. So, I'm so impressed with what's happened over the years that we've been here, and just seeing Capel evolve. And I think this is another real opportunity to see something really move forward. I'm not that sentimental about old buildings unless they're, really have great architecture. If the city really values this building and wants to buy it, move it, whatever, I think that's great. But I think what the city really needs to focus on is continuing the, the real flavor of what's there and what makes it all work. So, I'm very supportive of, of this kind of use, and I think the densities could be even larger, but it's, it's certainly adequate for what's there, so, thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Next signed up is Randall Engel.
Hello, my name is Randall Engel, I live at 554 Village Green Drive. Those of you who know me, I could probably stand up here for three hours and talk about anything, but in conservation of time, I just want to let you know that I'm definitely for this project. A lot about what the previous speaker spoke about is, when you go down to Old Town now, we've had Doty's, we've had Twisted Root, we've had a Chicken Place, we've had all that. And the restaurants that have survived down there would benefit from another restaurant or more foot traffic. And the businesses that are currently there, foot traffic is what they need. I don't know of the other businesses, what, how profitable they are and all that, that's none of my business, but I do know the more foot traffic you have, the better your business is going to be. That's not, you know, rocket science. So, I just wanted to come up here and let you know that I definitely am for the project, the concept of the project, the drawings of the project all match what's there. My biggest concern is, we, we keep calling it Old Town, and when I drive down there, I don't see a whole lot of Old Town there, most of the buildings are 10 to 15 years old. The majority of the buildings. So, I love the concept of calling it Old Town and having that, but the concept of the buildings on that side of Bethel Road is not Old Town. It's a development that was developed, made very, made look very good and different than anything else in Capel. And if you go up to Lewisville and look what they're doing to, to the Old Town of Lewisville up there now, this looks totally different than that. So, thanks for your time, and I appreciate you letting me speak.
Thank you for coming tonight. Next on the li, the list is Stephen Chaddick.
Hello, I'm Stephen Chaddick, I represent the owners, and I am a partial owner of the building. We've had, it, thanks to Mary for reminding me, because I couldn't access the DCAD records.
Your address, please, sir.
Yeah, so, I live in Denton, but it's 509 West Bethel Road here is the property that I represent.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. So, we've had it since 1983. My father purchased it with the idea of investment property in the area. He'd always liked to buy properties that had an existing structure on it if he could to rehab and to make a, you know, something income generating. And I took over, after his health deteriorated, I took over the management and renovations with my wife back in the early 90s, and we rehabbed the church building. And at one point, about three years later, I was underneath the building, sawing the joists, and taking the candid floor and leveling it, and doing all the floor repair work in there as well. So, I've, I'm intimate with the building, I know the structures problems, the drainage issues that are there, the building's quite low on the very backside, and is close to the ground, we've had termites in there. I love the old building, but it's functionally obsolete now. It's, we, one reason we haven't rehabbed that is because it's just not worth the money to throw in to that structure right at the moment. We've had this on LoopNet for five years now, probably two and a half years I've more, I guess aggressively marketed it, and Chris is the first legitimate developer that's really offered something that I thought would kind of fit in with what I know my father would have liked to have seen. And my dad wanted to invest for his family, and, you know, certainly, you know, liked the old buildings, but that was, that was a means to an end. And these are, these buildings are, if you've ever owned an old house, which my wife and I did, we bought the Kirkland House next door to it, and we put a new roof on it, we put, we renovated some of the underneath, foundation work-wise, and removed all the asbestos siding. And the city, at the beginning of the project for Greg Gansy, bought that and moved it to Heritage Park. So, we, we were certainly in the conservation realm, my wife and I, we had kids, and our life changed, and we really couldn't continue putting money into that at the time, so that was an opportune moment for us to be able to, you know, win-win. The house was saved, and that's truly one of the oldest historical homes that's there, along with the Onstott House down the way. And in my, in my viewpoint, those are really the only two truly historical homes. I mean, I understand Capel used something from the 40s as possibly historical, because there aren't that many homes left, and not any properties or structures, but to me, you've got to go back to the turn of the century to really get, you know, a, a home that has some architectural integrity and something that's really worth restoring. And, because they're money pits, it takes a lot of money to rehab. So, I'm just, I'm very excited about Chris's project, I think he came up with a very unique design, and I'm worried that if you all don't consider this and take it seriously, what's going to happen after this? Because my family, we want, the partnership wants to divest ourselves of some of these properties, and I'm not going to be held hostage to these buildings. I mean, as much as I put my sweat effort and sweat equity into that, I'm not, you know, have some attachment for certain, but after the, the Gansy project went through, the character of Old Town has changed, it's, 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 to me, to the better, to the betterment of Capel. And I think my father would have agreed with that, so, appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight. Our next speaker is Jeff Varnell.
Good evening, Counsel, Jeff Varnell, 1601 East Sandy Lake Road. I'd like to commend your staff, very excellent presentation, very thorough, and Matt's history really brought back a lot of memories, from me running Carter Crowley, playing with the kids there, and then the whole implement, the design and the implementation of that design to make Old Town a replica of the Old Town with the two-way, two-way streets, just like everyone has said, to make it a replica, not to keep it old necessarily, to but make it look like the Old Town that was designed in this, in this plan. What Old Town needs is people, it needs more people to be successful. What the businesses in Old Town need, in my opinion, is other businesses to create synergy. Businesses will draw people that will shop and eat in other people's businesses. So, just real excited about the drawings. I can tell you, from someone who owns property to the gateway of this city, for 32 years, I've lived in this town, and now own a significant piece of property that's a gateway to this city. I take a lot of pride in what it looks like when people come to Capel, because many times, I'm the first thing that they see. Mr. Collins and I have had these discussions, I know that he takes a lot of pride in his current development there on Capel Road, and he's taken a lot of pride in the development that, that he's going to bring to Old Town. It's going to be a significant improvement, it's going to be really dazzling. This council has a great opportunity to get behind something that's going to make Old Town really pop and continue the magic that we have with the Heritage Park and the continuing of, of all of the, the history there, that's there. So, thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments tonight. The last speaker that signed up to speak in favor is Barry Raven. Barry? If there was anybody else that intended to speak in favor, and I have not called your name, please let me know as soon as Mr. Raven has concluded his remarks. Your name and address, please, sir.
Yeah, Barry Raven, 201 Turnberry Lane, Capel. Now I know why you speak after the presentations, they were really good, I think Matt, Mary, and Chris all did a great job. I think that what is planned really will enhance Old Town Capel, and as other people have said, it's called Old Town Capel, but if you but if you go down and you drive around, which I did several times before I made a yea or nay decision, most of it is new. I also went by the building, which used to be a church. A church is the people. It's the congregation. It's not a building. Buildings come and go. As far as the history, it was built in 1948. And just to kind of clarify, there, there was a business called Creativa. It's not there anymore. I think it closed about a year ago. And then the Capel U Soccer has a small little space there. So the church, the, the actual place of worship is still there. The, the educational building is partially occupied. So I went around the building. I looked in the windows. To me, it's just a plain white building. There's really no significant architecture. There's no stained glass. There's no steel. There's no brick as compared to other historical buildings. Even the Capel Historical Society doesn't have it on their website. Maybe it is. I don't know. But as, as a historical building, some other ones are, like the barber shop across the street and the Minnards, which was moved. Those are cool. But in this particular case, I think that it, it, the plan going forward is better just to repurpose it, as I believe Chris said. I would not be in favor of moving it. It's just too much money. I bet you it would cost seven figures in order to move it. So I don't think that that would be a good thing to do. I think most people that live in towns, they want a vibrant downtown, Old Town. It's sort of pride to have that. If you look at cities surrounding here, Grapevine has a great downtown. Lewisville has a great downtown. Carrollton. South Lake is brand new, but they have a very nice place. There's businesses. It's vibrant. That's what I think we need for Capel, a vibrant downtown. In addition, again, as been said before, it will generate some revenue. If we don't, if we decide to spend money to move it or something like that, that's just going to take away money. And as we know, property taxes go up every year. And also we have this Amazon thing that's kind of looming that may cost us some money as well. So I would just say, again, agreed with everything. Ditto's. I support it. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Was there anybody else intending to speak in favor tonight? Seeing none, we'll move over to those that signed up to speak against. First on the list is Rory Carrick.
Good evening. Rory Carrick, 123 Lodge Road, Capel. I have petition signatures. Could I hand these across? And I have, I have to warn you, I may use a little more than my five minutes. So feel free to stop me and hopefully you'll allow me to continue. So I represent at least 1,497 petition signatures of people in Capel and outside of Capel who come here and, and visit the city. I'm going to read through this and I have some slides that I would like to talk through to try and make this as efficient as I can. You should also have received a formal opposition document from us a couple of weeks ago as well. So I'd like to start this evening with what we haven't seen tonight. This is the church we're talking about. 1894 originally built, rebuilt again, 1947, 48. These are pictures of that church that the Capel Historical Society has catalogued and collected stories about the churches as it was built and as it was used. And this is the gateway to Old Town Capel. And I'd like to thank Mr. Chaddick for the pictures. I'm not sure how you've got a drone up there by the airport, but I don't want to know. And it's a beautiful place. And these are the buildings that we're talking about are raising permanently. So this evening, the city council has to make a decision that'll impact Old Town Capel forever. The decision has broader consequences and should not be seen just as an isolated planning and development and zoning case. So let's talk about what happens if you do approve this. So what I call Phase One, what's on the ballot today, is building those six or seven buildings around on these, on the southwest corner. Phase Two will follow immediately after that. The developer, Mr. Collins, is talking to Mr. Chaddick about the area, the northwest corner where Cottage Salon is. That very quickly will be built up with very similar buildings. Once these two corners are developed, the businesses on the northeast corner where Joe Shirley's shop is and Tatted Style, Jack Aranda, these buildings will no longer be able to attract the type of shoppers who are drawn to the quaint, interesting buildings, the charming atmosphere that we currently have in, in Old Town. So consequently, over time, these buildings and these shops will fail. And these properties will go out of business and eventually they'll sell to developers in exactly the same way. And that street there along Bethel will look exactly like what you've seen this, this evening. Is this the picture that you want to see of Old Town? So here, I'm, I'm here to really talk about a viable alternative. It's a bit tricky because there's obviously a contract that Mr. Collins has. I can't talk to Mr. Chaddick about this technically because it's on the contract, but I want to put at least an alternative in front of you. So if you deny this zoning at PD tonight, and we expect Mr. Collins' land purchase option will eventually expire. And once we've formed a nonprofit organization, we'll approach Mr. Chaddick with an offer to purchase the land and the buildings. We met with Frost Bank the other day, discussed the financing and all this seems quite feasible. So what will we do with these buildings? All right, so let's talk about the annex. Firstly, let me dispel the myth that the annex is in bad shape and it's uninhabitable. It's falling down. It simply is not true. The structure is perfectly sound. The interior is in good condition. Yes, it needs some foundation work, but whose house doesn't need foundation, foundation work? This annex or old schoolhouse is perfectly designed to house eight to 10 small retail shops. I'm just going to go forward to the, the floor plan. So we would replace some of these windows along Main Street to be doors and be, to allow access from Main Street. So similar to the Purple Door, there would be accesses all the way along to individual retail stores. Obviously, you make it a lot prettier than the Purple Door, but this would generate a huge amount of traffic if you've got eight to 10 small retail shops out there. They'll also have common, these retailers, which would be on the bottom layer, would have access to a common area behind them where these artisans and business owners can collaborate and work on their products, et cetera. And these retail spaces will be affordable enough for entrepreneurs to take a chance to launch their business. And please note, this is not a flea market. This is not something that comes and goes. These are permanent and substantial businesses.
Mr. Carrick, just a moment. Counsel, with your permission, he can extend or we can ask him to step aside? Continue on? Continue on? Okay. Mr. Carrick, five more minutes.
All right. So once these, once these builders are rented, our nonprofit organization will really kick in. The goal will be to educate and inspire, support small businesses to grow and develop into the size they choose to be. Our city has a vast pool of professionals that we would bring in to volunteer to help these small retailers learn their crafts. So we'd bring in a merchandiser, for example, to show them how to promote their products and display their products, or a marketing professional to educate about advertising on social media and help these businesses grow. So in contrast to the development you heard about tonight, the annex would really compete with foot traffic. We're talking, Mr. Collins is talking about three retail areas. The rest will be offices which don't generate foot traffic. Here, we're talking about eight to 10 small retail spaces, four offices, two large studios and a large shared space. And we've already got three tenants that are talking to us about potentially moving to this building if this becomes an option. So this is a very, very viable situation to drive traffic again. It wouldn't be a whitewashed building anymore. It would be attractive. It would be spruced up to, to be a sort of a, an interesting part of Old Town. The church, we would repurpose as an amazing event space where you could hold weddings, family gatherings, graduation parties, even offsite business events. And with the grassed area out back, this makes for a prime small event location, much needed in Capel. And there's plenty of parking, as we've, we've discussed a lot this evening. Our rates would be a lot cheaper than the competition because we're a not-for-profit organization. So we think that we can easily rent this out for special events. And then to give back to the community, we'd also coordinate with the Capel Historical Society to open up the church to the public on days that align with when the Heritage Park is open. So a lot of people have said to us that this is a very ambitious goal. And here's why I'm personally confident that this is possible. Firstly, as a CFO, I've spent my career finding and justifying profitable investments for very large companies all around the world. And if you look at this property as is, as a private investor, who typically go on 20, 25% return on their, on their investment, this makes absolutely no economic sense. However, it does make sense under the framework of an entity that's not-for-profit. The financial, financial model works if we have patrons willing to lend us money for a period of time at a market interest rate, which we have. And if we're able to secure some grants and sponsorships for the initial repurposing of these buildings, from that point, there will be enough rental income to sustain this nonprofit indefinitely. The second reason I want to offer for this ambitious goal is there, there are a lot of families that are very passionate about historic buildings and giving them new life. My family is no different. That's a building that needs help. This is not what the church is and this is not what the annex is. This is an old farmhouse near Paris, Texas, which was built in the late 1800s. We bought this house. We renovated it. We turned it into a weekend getaway. Now it has new life. A family lives there and it will continue for another 100 and 200 years. This is the Infeld House. We raised our young daughters in this house and a few years back, an editor to the Capel Historical Society paid to have it moved into Heritage Park. Again, it has new life. And this is Jack Aranda's gift shop. My wife bought this property six years ago. It was in pretty bad state of repair. The business wasn't profitable. Over time, with a lot of sweat and tears, she has built this gift shop into a profitable asset for Old Town Capel. And we're not alone in this passion. Dana and Nate Pughes, for example, have done the same for Tatted Style. And of the 1,500 people in that, in that petition, you will find very similar stories of passion for saving Capel's history. So to close out, the P&amp;Z Commission made it clear that Mr. Chaddick has the right to sell his property and we fully agree. But since there was only one option on the table, they felt compelled to approve it at the P&amp;Z level. This evening, hopefully, I've shown you that there's a second alternative for Mr. Chaddick and one that also saves the building and I think has a great, is a great compromise. After the Fox News story aired, Mr. Collins called me and actually offered me the property, offered to sign the contract to me for a certain sum of money. However, the next day, he recanted the offer when I asked him to try and put it in writing. So we tried to reach an agreement, but unfortunately, we have to leave it in your hands to decide if you will permanently remove the old from Old Town. That's really the decision in front of you. And please, I ask you to remember, this is a decision that isn't just a zoning case. This is one that really impacts people's lives. And in terms of the tax revenue that was quoted earlier on, you'll get $62,000 of extra tax revenue for these new buildings that Mr. Collins is proposing. Is $62,000 worth removing our history? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Our next speaker is Nathaniel Pugh.
Good evening. My name is Nathaniel Pugh. My wife Dana and I have raised our family and made Capel our home for the last 24 years. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts in opposition to the demolition and removal of the old church and annex in Old Town. Seems to me that you have two important questions. One is there, first question, is there ever a time when the best interest of a community supersedes the right of an individual to buy and sell for profit as he or she chooses? It's a hard question, especially for those who are impacted by it. And I think we all recognize that there are those times, no matter how difficult that question may be. Second question is, is this one of those times? I think it is. One reason to preserve the heart and soul of a town, giving the city the character and the charm, to make it a place worth coming to, and others will speak to that. What I want to speak to tonight is the reason, is how this renovation of the annex and church will help create a vibrant Old Town that all of us desire and to share, let me share a quick story to support this. Five years ago, my wife and I had a desire to build, find a shop where she could do what she's always wanted to do. And that's bring handmaids and, and items that are of local artists and vintage items to a city. Where right now, you had to drive to Dallas or Fort Worth to find those items. We saw that the Ivy Cottage was coming up for lease on the old post office and we contacted the owner and signed a lease. And here's the deal. She had a dream, but she didn't know how it would work. We never would have taken the risk of starting a business if we would have had to purchase the building first. This is an important point because as things stand now, these buildings Mr. Collins is planning to build will, will sell for right around a million dollars. The buyer must purchase them and then wait for the buildings to be constructed. And no telling how long that will take these days. So who can afford to do this? Obviously, it's companies with deep pockets putting in predictable offices that don't breathe life into a community. Just look at what existing similar nearby buildings, what kind of, what, what they attract. It's offices. It's a medical offices. It's a wealth management offices, and accounting offices. And those are great. That's okay. But with all due respect, may I kindly ask if you know any one of your constituents who are asking for more offices to be built in Capel? Neither do I. A plan has been proposed to you that will transform the annex and offer people like me and my wife a, a chance to start, to try something, to have a dream and willing to work long and hard hours to see it come to fruition, to lease small spaces and put their creativity to work. Not only did Tatted Style, my wife's shop, survive COVID, but five years later, I can only tell you that we did purchase that building and the building next to it, that you know it has the gas pumps out front and the house behind it. We're preserving them. And each week, we're open, along with Jack Aranda and other small businesses in Old Town, to offer creative and unique items, not to mention doing business with people that you get to know over time, and it's family. We live and do business in Capel. We are for a flourishing Capel. And I'm sure you've heard it said that restaurants and retail are the heart of any town. The alternative proposal offered tonight will bring life and lots of foot traffic to this area. I urge you tonight to consider, how can you replace part of a character of a community once it's demolished? According to the proposal, the seller will still get to sell the property, but the buyer will keep the history and the character while bringing new and interesting shopping experiences to our community and being keeping with the original vision of Old Town. So back to the original question. Is this a town when the overall benefit to a community is put above the right of one? And I hope you will agree with me tonight and say, yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jennifer Mandela.
My name's Jennifer Mandela. I live at 303 Walnut Grove Lane here in Capel. Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak in opposition to this zoning request tonight. I agree with Mr. Carrick and with our previous speaker. There's value in preserving Capel history. And that value is not in preserving just the look or the imagination of what historical buildings looked like, but in preserving those buildings and the history itself. I noted that the staff memo to the council- I noted that the staff memo to the council noted that neither of these buildings are on the national or state historic registries. However, the only things in Capel on the state registry are the Grapevine Springs Park and our various historical cemeteries. There's nothing on the national historic registry. But if that's the criterion that we're using to determine if buildings are worthy of preservation, that would mean that no building in Capel met that criterion. And I certainly hope that that's not the case, because I think we do have a rich history, and that history forms part of the basis of our community and our, our community and our families here. I would also note that, according to the staff memo, our own Capel Historical Society did identify the church building as being a Priority A building, and the annex as a Priority B. To me, that says that our community does value those buildings and the history that comes with them, and I hope that our city council and mayor will continue to preserve and recognize that value. I also appreciated hearing from Mr. Carrick tonight, his ideas for the, an alternative for use in those buildings, because I think if you look at what the annex building has recently and currently been used for, it's been the home of Capel Youth Soccer Association for a number of, I believe, 20 or 30 years now, and previously for Createria Studios, which closed after their owner retired. My children were involved with both of those organizations, taking art classes at Createria, and have been playing for Capel Youth Soccer Association since they were four years old. Those types of retail and community organizations also matter to our, to our community, and they don't, there's not a place for them in the, in this proposed development of the mixed-use retail and office space, or retail and residential space. Capel Youth Soccer, I can't speak for them, but I'm going to imagine that they can't afford a million-dollar building, nor do they need a million-dollar building. A small art studio that offers classes to our children and to adults and fosters creativity and belonging in our, in our community can't afford, nor do they necessarily need, a million-dollar building. But we, as our community, need those types of organizations to have our community. Finally, I just had one, one thought on the, the comments about the density of the buildings in the area. If you look at the overhead drone shots, or go down Google Maps, or even just drive down that street, yes, the newer developments in Old Town are more dense, but when I look across the street, I see buildings with green space and land around them, and that doesn't exist in this, in the, in the proposal that you're being asked to approve. The density calculation appears to count the park, all of the land in the denominator, but only five of the buildings in the numerator, and that doesn't seem to make sense to me. Why are we counting the parking lot and the space that the retail-only corner building is taking up as, as acreage, but not counting it as a building for density? The only way you get to a density of under six for a six, for a lot that has six buildings on it and a parking lot is if you're, is if you're not counting one of those buildings. And I don't think that's a fair calculation or a consideration, or, and I don't think that calculation should, should be considered. So I am here to support our small businesses that currently exist in, in Old Town, like Jacaranda, like the barber shop, like Tattered Style, like Capel Youth Soccer Association, that are going to be pushed out by developments like this. And I think if that happens, it'll be a sad day for Capel. We'll lose a lot of our history and a lot of what makes our community a community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Karen Ward.
Hello, I'm Karen Ward from the Cottage Salon located on the corner of South Capel Road and West Bethel Road. The vision in the past was to preserve our Old Town Capel buildings with history. Our building was built in 1927 as a fellowship hall of the First United Methodist Church. I am told by my clients it was also used by St. Anne's Church. Emery and I love working there in the building, and we turned it into a hair salon after it served as a music building for children for 13 years, kind of music. Our clients enjoy the character, charm, history, and the cozy size. We put our life savings into turning it into, to fit our business, and we both have prospered and are very thankful to Capel. As we look out our windows to the south, we see the First Baptist Church of Capel, its education buildings alongside, which should be saved and preserved. It has also housed several businesses, a gift shop and the chamber. To the east of us, the Bethel Road Barber Shop, Jacaranda Gift Shop, the Capel Barber Shop, and Tattered Style, 1 and 2. We are all real close to each other and are part of Old Town Capel. I know most own their buildings, which was a sizable investment. Not all of us can buy real estate, and we need to rent. If buildings can't stay because they don't own them, then will the city please consider the proposal of a historical village to be put by the city of Capel on the land that is in front of the senior center? Also, the buildings would have affordable rent. The small business is still the heartbeat of America. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Our next speaker is Sarah Carrick.
Good evening. My name's Sarah Carrick. Live at 123 Large Road, and I own Jacaranda Gift Shop in Old Town Capel. As a retail business owner with a shop at this very intersection in Old Town Capel, I think I can offer you all a unique perspective. I spend most of my days there and hear exactly what people enjoy about Old Town, what they miss, and what they would like to see. Visitors come from surrounding cities and even out of state to visit our shop in Old Town Capel because of the unique charm and openness of the area, unlike Grapevine, which some find overwhelming. But almost without fail, we are asked, where are the rest of the old shops? Dana and I reluctantly explain that we're the only ones here. Most visitors don't even know about Restaurants, Georges, Let It Shine, or the Art Center. We end up directing visitors there because those businesses are off the main road. The only reason those people stopped on their drive-through was because they liked the way Old Town looks. First impressions do make a difference. Replace these old buildings with new towering structures, and you've immediately lost that draw. Old Town Capel will look like any other street corner in Capel, commercialized, cookie-cutter, and developer-driven. Like it or not, our old buildings are the drawcard to Old Town Capel. Contrary to what the developer is claiming, the financial impact of the proposed development would be detrimental to my business. The new development would cause our property taxes to increase and our property value to decrease to land value only. The proposed development won't increase the much-needed foot traffic that supports all of the Old Town businesses, as the quaint buildings, laid-back atmosphere, and open green spaces that appeal to all the visitors will be gone. The developer's marketing strategy has been aimed towards small business owners, ironically the very people he's threatening to put out of business, enticing them to bundle their commercial and home mortgages to make both entities more affordable. One could argue it's akin to putting all your eggs in one basket. I think you'd be hard-pressed to find a business entrepreneur who is willing to spend $6,000 plus per month on their mortgage alone. As for the residential parts, I'm sure wouldn't want my front door opening onto a busy road like Bethel if I had young children, and then our older population are looking to downsize to single-story homes in peaceful neighborhoods, not upstairs on busy throughfairs. I've been told the corner two-story building will require an accessible elevator and added egress to comply with retail building accessibility and safety codes. It seems to me to be a foregone conclusion, then, that this too would end up as office space. It certainly is designed to look like office space and not retail, where you would think there'd be an inviting main entrance and not a door tucked around the side. At first glance, the renderings may look very appealing to the public, but what most people don't know is that each building will only be built once each individual building sells. We could be left with huge gaps for an indeterminate length of time and a never-ending construction zone, especially considering there's many other more affordable retail office spaces available in Capel. One person is all it could take to change the landscape of Old Town Capel forever, but each of you have a chance to stop it from happening. It's been said that you're required to remove the emotion from your decision-making process and consider only what is best for Old Town Capel. But we are all here tonight because of our emotions. Our emotions drive our actions, and I ask you to please think about that when considering the broader impact of your decision. And remember, it should not be the citizens here fighting for Capel's history. It should never have come to this. You, our elected officials, should be the ones fighting for our city's history. You can change the course of Old Town. So while the heartfelt pleas of my fellow Old Town Capel business owners may not sway you, the alternative business plan presented by Rory, or the 1,504 people opposing this plan, I ask you to consider the basic question of whether you are willing to destroy our successful businesses based on a questionable development for Old Town. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Dana Pugh.
Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the matter of saving these buildings in Old Town Capel. My name is Dana Pugh, and I live at 131 Wind and Collie Lane. Myself and my family have lived in Capel for 25 years. The very reason we upgraded our family of five and moved our three sons here in 1998 was our desire to raise them in this small-town community. Currently, we own two antique and vintage shops in Old Town Capel. We opened our first shop, Tattered Style Home, five years ago when it came up for lease. Fortunately, a couple of years afterwards, we were given the first row of reviews on that piece of property, and we were able to purchase the, that whole corner. Our second shop resides, and then, so our first shop resides in the 1940s post office. We opened our second store, Tattered Style 2, one year ago. It resides in the old telephone exchange office, or as most refer to it, the old gas station. When we decided to take on the restoring of these two old buildings, a big part of it was in the interest of preserving the little bit of history Capel still holds. And where we are today is certainly not where we began this journey. It came about with its fair share of hard work, of financial expense, sacrifice, late nights of physical labor, and yes, of course, some tears. If you haven't visited my shops and others like Jacaranda, I would invite you to do so. I think you'd be pleasantly surprised in what we've created and how we are honoring these old buildings. Might I add, we are not taking for granted the fact that the city has invested into Heritage Park, and for that, we are so grateful. I would like to share, as a shop owner in Old Town, the thing I hear over and over again from customers that visit from all over is where is the rest of Old Town? We were hoping there was more of this. What they're referencing is the charm and the feelings evoked by these historic old buildings, a step back in time, a slowing down in the midst of the very stressed-out culture we all now live in, one that simply cannot be replicated with new. By relocating or tearing down the church and annex, I believe we're missing out on a real opportunity to enhance our community, to put Capel on the map, so to speak. I realize the buildings have no, have not technically been deemed historic, but those buildings are in the very heart of Old Town. The very first impression of Old Town is at that critical intersection of Main Street and West Bethel Road, where the church and annex are located. Why, then, would there ever even be consideration for new construction? Do we really believe that a series of brand-new buildings with no real charm, nostalgia, and lacking in history, that don't evoke that Mayberry feeling that was proposed for this area years ago, that they would actually be a better solution for our community? For the record, we are talking about the dozen or so original old buildings on the strip of West Bethel Road, and obviously, those little buildings don't have the same monetary value that new construction could have, but the value these old buildings bring is the heart and soul to Old Town, which should supersede their monetary value. It continues to surprise me that over and over, we're told it can't be done, or it's not financially viable, and yet old buildings all over the country and even the metroplex are preserved. Places like Old McKinney, Old Lewisville, Old Denton, Old Caledon, et cetera, these areas create vibrant attractions for their communities. Respectfully, I would ask that you would entertain or recall what the original plan of 2002 had in mind for Old Town Capel, certainly not the moving or demolition of the few old buildings that remain. I wish you all could be a fly on the wall to hear the conversations that go on in our stores, conversations of appreciation, gratitude, and excitement that buildings like ours still exist. And Capelians aren't the only ones echoing these words. It's people traveling in from all over. I would ask you, please consider the saving of our old buildings. Undoubtedly, as a developer, Chris Collins has every right to purchase and build whatever he wants, but there comes a point when the good of the community should come before the desire of an individual and their financial gain. Also, might I add, the Chaddick family absolutely has a right to sell their family property, but couldn't it be sold to someone or some entity that would protect and save the church and annex? To this point, it's not been given a fair chance. As members of the council, I would ask you, how do you want this story to go down? What do you want to be said with how you all voted on this matter? I hope it's one of preservation for the precious few old buildings we have left. I trust you will make the best decision for Old Town Capel. Thank you for the opportunity to share my heart.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Our next speaker is Mr. Joe Shirley.
My name is Joe Shirley, 582 Villawood Lane. I own the Bethel Road Barber Shop in Old Town Capel. I moved here to Capel in 1979, 43 years ago, and I am real concerned about the possibility of demolishing the church. We, the, the church building and the annex are an integral part of Old Town, and most of the buildings that were here when I moved here 43 years ago have been torn down, moved, or remodeled beyond recognition. What does it say about our community if we intentionally destroy our history? And how would you, council people, feel if you knew that everything you had worked on in your term in office in 50 years would all be torn down, destroyed, or remodeled beyond recognition? I'm strongly in, in support of the proposal by Mr. Carrick to purchase the building with the, with the nonprofit and create a lot of retail spaces, which I think, I agree with the other speakers, I think that would greatly improve the viability of the area, the viability of our existing businesses, and I think it's the, the right thing to do. I think we need to do everything we can to, to preserve those buildings and make them viable and continued benefit to the Old Town. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Our last speaker is Mayor Candy Sheen.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Candy Sheen. I live at 321 Quiet Valley, and I think I make a presence here every, once every 10 years, so this is pretty important to me, too. I think I just want to share a little historic perspective, because I guess I'm becoming part of this. part of the history here. I ran for mayor in 1997, and what—I kept hearing during the campaign was, please just keep Capel small-town. Keep it like Mayberry, and please tell me you know what Mayberry—who—what Mayberry is, right? Okay, you're the youngest, that's good. I was really—I couldn't decide whether to say that or not. But one of our—our very first citywide surveys, which we started when Jim Witt was here, really reflected the same thing that your current one said. And I went back to look at it, and it was, "small-town feel, unique feel, the local culture." And that's why we're here tonight, is to really talk about the local culture we have in Capel. The city forefathers have taken action for decades and decades, since the early '90s, as we saw from the great history presentation from the city. We've been preserving our past for decades. We restored and rededicated Grapevine Springs Park in 1993 as an historic open space, and that really was one of the first initiatives, right, for Old Capel? Thank goodness we didn't have a council who wanted soccer fields and just replace Grapevine Springs Park. So we've had a vision for Old Capel. We've had a vision since the early 1990s. And, yes, we didn't ever have buildings that were beautifully designed. We didn't have cathedrals. We didn't have stained glass, because you know what? We're small-town. We're small-town America. We were rural America, and that's our roots. That's what we need to preserve. We're not going to preserve any fancy buildings, because we weren't fancy people. I still don't think we're fancy people. I still think we're good old—you're Americans next door. I also want to thank Mr. Hager, who's been here. You're part of history, too. Really discussing the issue of zoning, because that's why we're here, because this is a zoning issue. This is the proposed development, and it is not the vision for Old Capel. And I have to say—I took notes, like I always did. We're talking about density. I do think it's dense. I have to agree with the P&amp;Z Commissioner, and he's been serving Capel for many, many years. The density and the use is—never was the intent of any historic plan, and I've been a part of a lot of them and have followed these. It is the retail and restaurant we need. We need the foot traffic. It's what we've been hearing. We need people in Old Capel. We need people walking around. We need people going to Georges. We need people going to Let It Shine. We need people—we need people walking, and the business isn't going to do it. And I—it's really important to me is we need a really nice gateway to Old Town, and it's going to be old buildings. It's going to be preserving those old buildings. I personally don't think we need a wow at the gateway. I think we need our history, our culture, something that represents us. And because—and I'm going to add this, just because I was in work session, I thought this was really interesting, about Discover Capel, the initiative between the City of Capel and the Chamber of Commerce, five of the six lead photos are in Old Town. That's how important Old Capel is. Those are the lead pictures. What's the second slide? It is—it was a picture of Old Capel. Captures the essence of Capel's historical roots and quality of life. That's us. That's Old Capel. So I'm here to ask you, what is going to be your legacy for Old Capel? What is your vote going to be to preserve Old Capel? You've seen what other councilmembers and councils have done before you. It's now your turn. What is your legacy? What is your name going to be attached to for Old Capel? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Was there anybody that was left off the list? Yes, ma'am.
I didn't sign up, but can I sign now?
I believe—I believe in the back.
Yeah. Yeah.
I didn't press up. I got everybody else.
Okay, I'm Ruth Holder. I live at 134 Natchez Trace, and I just want to say this. I'm a transplant from Chicago, and, you know, when you grow up in northern cities, the streetscape doesn't change. You walk to schools, you head your downtowns, and those storefronts, I remember ever since I was born. I remember going to college and writing an essay about the stores that stayed, and that's what I remember. We never, as a northern city, tore down our buildings to write—to build new buildings. You preserved, and you figured out how to keep the character of the city. That's who you are. Those churches, those schools, that's what you need to keep and figure out how to make that work. I live on the northern end of Capel. I've been here 13 years. I see a lot of vacancy with Anamias moving, with Tangerine moving out, with Smoothie King moving out, with PetSmart moving out. Why are we building more buildings? Because building a building isn't going to make somebody come and pay you property tax. You know, I used to do economic impact studies for Cooper's Library and present to city councils. So what I think you guys need to look at—I admire the gentleman that came forward with this application. He did a great job, okay? But as a city, you have to look at the overall revenue that you're bringing in, and you have vacancy rates that need to be addressed. Building a new building could potentially cause you additional vacancies if not the right parties are brought to those buildings. So the other alternative that's being proposed, where you're not going to raise the buildings we have, is a viable alternative and can provide the property tax rates—property tax revenue—that is being proposed by building new buildings. Okay? So I jotted a lot of these ideas down as I was listening to everybody's input, and I believe that maybe we should slow down and look at what, overall, the city of Capel needs, not just downtown, but where we could reap more revenue for not only the main drag of Denton Tap, but also for downtown Capel.
Thank you for your comments. And, yes, we had one more—yes, ma'am?
I live at 1006 Forestwood. I'm also president of Capel Youth Soccer Association, and I just wasn't going to speak tonight, but I kept hearing people say things that I didn't agree with. So a few people keep saying that the church and the annex are not viable buildings, but CYSA have been in those buildings for 30—almost 30 years, and it's been perfectly good for us. I support Mr. Carrick's idea, and he already has an anchor tenant in us. We provide the foot traffic, and we're a community-wide—and we drive a community-wide awareness of Old Town. They come down there all the time to see us. We have 1,500 kids—that's 1,500 families—that are already coming into Old Town just to see us. We are super loyal. We'll hold that building down as long as we exist, and so I support what Mr. Carrick plans to do with the building. Please don't tear it down. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That being our last speaker, well, I had you signed up to speak under item 11, so you're Mr—Dr. Henderson? So I had you signed up to speak under item 11. If you were—if you're—depending on what your comments were going to be, you can certainly speak now or wait for item 11. Thank you. I feel compelled to ask for an executive session to consult with our city attorney. Councilmember Carroll.
Don. Don. Come on.
Don.
Come on. Trying to get him.
Okay. Was it? If we continue, I'm going to— Good evening. The time is 10:53 PM. We have adjourned from executive session, and we're reconvening into the Capel City Council. We had just concluded our public hearing, and we are open for comments by councils. Council, any comments or questions for staff or the applicant? Mayor Protim.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to make a motion.
Mayor Protim, you're welcome to make the motion. We had—I believe we need to let our city attorney make a statement?
Yeah, please.
One, mayor and council, I want to clarify some things. During the course of the presentation, there's discussion and presentation by members of the public concerning of alternate plans. I would admonish you that the alternate plans that have been proposed are neither by the owner or a person with legal authority to represent anyone with regard to the use of this property. You must consider the zoning on the property as it is today, what's allowed today, versus the proposal under the plan development that has been proposed by the applicant. You must make your decision on that, not based on what may or may not occur for a person that does not have legal authority to represent the owner or represent anyone that can change the zoning on the property. The other is that the council may consider, obviously, to continue this case and then make a decision whether they want to continue the public hearing as well, and I'm making that statement for the benefit of not only you, but the audience as well, so they understand. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protim, would you like to continue your motion?
Yes, thank you, mayor. In the past, when we had a zoning request before us, when there are two parties have differences of opinion, we send them back for both parties to discuss and come back with a solution. I think it is also applicable in this situation, so I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing until the next meeting, so the parties can discuss and come up with an amicable solution.
Seconded, my councilmember, John. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, for clarification for the movement in the second, we normally continue these to a date certain. The next meeting will be the first meeting in January, which would, I believe, be January the 9th or 10th—10th. Is that your motion?
That's correct.
Okay, and the second, Mr. John?
Yes. Thank you.
It's January 10th.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the modification.
Yes.
Council, is there any discussion? Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, mayor. Can I get some clarification on exactly what the—the purpose of the continuation is? Or what the expectation is with the continuation?
Just like I stated, in the past, the both parties sit down and talk about it and come back, and—which happened with this applicant eight or nine months ago, and when we had a zoning change request before us. And they came back, and they said, "Okay, we agree on a solution."
Respectfully, Mayor Protim, I don't see the purpose of continuing that for that reason, because the—the parties that we're discussing, it's a zoning issue, so therefore we're discussing the zoning that's on the table, not necessarily a—you know, parties that we're sending back to make some sort of—compromise. So I'm just confused as to why we would be postponing for that reason, so just a thought.
Councilmember John.
Thank you, mayor. One of the reasons why I do want to go ahead and continue is not just for the party to maybe even discuss about it, but mainly it's because I'm kind of looking into the historic district as to whether we want to continue with the path of having new buildings there or a— or another useful purpose for that historic district site. So that's my reason.
Council, any other discussion? Councilmember Nevels.
I just want to kind of throw out there, I mean, I understand if there's a need to continue, if we need to, you know, if there is the need for that, but I think that we were elected to make decisions, and as hard as those decisions might be, depending on either side, I think that that's what we're elected to do. So I would, I guess I would urge everyone to, let's do what we can tonight, and then we can move forward from there.
Councilmember Carol.
Yeah, I would, I'm going to agree with councilmember Nevels. I think, I'm not hearing any additional information that we are going to gather on the zoning case that is going to help us with this decision. And so with that, I would think we need to make a decision on the zoning case, unless I'm missing it and there is a desire for some additional zoning case-related information. So I would concur that we should move forward with the decision on the zoning.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes, I'm in agreement with Councilman Nevels. We need to make a decision on this. The applicant has spent time and money to get this put together and to just string it along for a discussion between the developer and the opposing parties. I mean, it's quite straightforward. I mean, it's either the building is taken down or removed, or it's not. And I don't think there's any kind of happy medium in there that they're going to be willing to achieve.
Thank you, Council. Any other comments? We do have a valid motion and a second on the table to continue this item to a date certain of January tenth. With no other comments, we'll take our vote now, all in favor of that motion to continue to January tenth. Say aye. Raise your hand and say aye.
Jen Mathieu, opposed. Long Hina S. Smith, Carol Nevels Hill, the motion fails.
Thank you very much. Sorry about the confusion. We don't do this very often, fortunately. So we still have, at this point, we're back to comments by the council. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we're at a crossroads in Old Town. You know, the city has made a significant investment in the development of Old Town. And a certain critical mass is needed down there. We need the synergy, we need to be able to activate the streets with pedestrian traffic. Buildings one, two, and six all have office on the ground floor. I don't think that's the appropriate use. I think we need retail and restaurant down there on the first floors of any buildings that are there. So I cannot support this in its present state.
Councilmember Hina Hosa Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been on council since 2005, and I was a part of the conversation, the vision for what Old Town was. Part of the discussion, what we wanted Old Town to be. We knew that we would never be a destination place like South Lake. We were trying to be a South Lake. We wanted it to be a place where it attracted those who work and live in Capel, right? And there's a certain feel, a certain look of what we have there, which is why we wanted the retail, we wanted the restaurants, and we wanted the pedestrian traffic. I appreciate all the conversations tonight. I know there's a lot of emotion behind it, and I know that it's hard to separate the emotion behind it. I appreciate all of those who currently have businesses down there and who have repurposed some of our older buildings to be able to keep the look and feel of Capel. I also appreciate Mr. Collins, who's been a great partner with Capel in looking at ways to bring something different, to add maybe value to our Old Town Capel. Like councilmember Hill, you know, we need the pedestrian traffic, would love to see more of the retail and restaurant. I struggle a little bit with the density and even just overall, again, the use of the first floor. I don't know if there's a way for Mr. Collins to rethink it and to come back, but I do struggle with the density more than anything. So with that said, I also will not be supporting this.
Councilmember Long.
Difficult. Dilemma. You know, it's easy to see both sides. The, you know, it's not, you know, I've got investments down there, but it's, you know, we've talked immensely, you know, incessantly about the fact that we need restaurants down there. And so by voting for what Mr. Collins wants to do, we have that possibility, at least we have that possibility, to get the restaurants. And we've, you know, the previous developer, I mean, talked to me a lot about the fact that we, he had a difficult time trying to recruit restaurants, and obviously, that has not changed. And so with the additional space for the restaurants and the retail down there, I think, I think that's probably the way that we really should go on this thing. I know that's difficult, that jeopardizes the way they've, you know, the buildings will, but I can, I can support that and would be willing to do that.
Councilmember Nevels.
I echo you. Councilmember Long, difficult. I heard a lot of passion tonight. I've heard a lot of love for this city and what people's vision think for what this city should be, what it should look like. I'm a business owner myself in this town, and I am fortunate enough to own commercial property in this town. And I tend to go back to my rights as a property owner. And what does that mean for me? That means that I want to protect the right to buy land and sell land and make those transactions. And to be really honest, it's, you know, Art Center's great, I love going down there, but I feel like Old Town needs a jolt. It needs something down there. We got to start doing something, because as it sits right now, it's not quite the oomph that I think people, some people were looking for. You know, is this proposal the, you know, the best proposal it could be? I don't know. I wish I could read the tea leaves and be able to, you know, to look into the future and be able to see. But what I see is a developer who is investing in Old Town, who's trying to step up and put money into the development and really get some things going down there. And as we heard, you know, that, you know, I was a member of the Chamber of Commerce when it was down there, and it's, that site just hasn't really done anything in the seven years that it's been empty. So I'm going to support this proposal, because I want to support people's rights to their property and be able to develop things and try to make things happen. I want to try to grow Old Town and, you know, pour some capital in there and try to, you know, get it better than what it is now. So I'll be voting yes for this.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes, I'd like to address Councilman Long and Councilman Neville. So I understand we want to get some vibrance down there, but office space is not the way to do it. We've already got too much office space. We've probably built too much residential there to be able to reach critical mass, to make this a place where people want to go and hang out. So that's why I think Buildings one, two, and six should be zoned retail slash restaurant, because we just need more foot traffic down there. And quite honestly, I think if we did that, it would actually help those businesses that are across the street and help generate more traffic so they can maintain their stores. Thanks.
Councilmember Nevels.
Councilmember Hill, I hear you loud and clear. The problem is, is that we've had issues in the past of getting restaurants down there. We've got an empty, you know, pad right now for a restaurant site. We've had two restaurants go in that have failed that has become a, you know, a very nice salon, I will say, but it's a salon now. So I think that's where I get hung up on that, is that, is that, you know, we have sites available down there, and we still haven't drawn the developers to come and put those restaurants in that we talk about. So at what point do we continue to, you know, have these restaurant spots available and just have them there empty for no one to take advantage of? And that's kind of the angle that I'm looking at. And I respectfully hear you, and I hear what you're saying. And, you know, we're already investing in some retail there now. We've got some spec retail that's, you know, that's being built now. We've got Let It Shine that's, you know, putting up their building right now. So, you know, we're getting some retail down there, but, you know, I think that this is a healthy mix of office and retail in this development. And I think that's the reason why I'm supporting it, is because it's someone who's coming and willing to step up with the checkbook and actually make something happen where we've had these empty sites that no one has before. So that's kind of my reasoning on that.
Councilmember Hina Hosa Smith.
I'm looking to debate up here, but just to respectfully say, Councilmember Nevels, just thinking through the vision of Capel and what we've talked about in Vision 2030 and Vision 2040. And, you know, with all due respect to, I realize, yes, that we've waited for a long time and we've had some spots available for restaurants. We've also just, we're in the midst of recovering from a pandemic that was out of our control and a recession, and, you know, people are struggling with finding people to work. And there's just, there's so many things right now that we're, that I think we can still give it, give it an opportunity and a chance. And I guess that's where I agree with Councilmember Hill. There's just, there are just some things that are just out of our control right now that, that we're still in recovery mode. And so I want to be mindful of that, too. But, but I appreciate your comments, and thank you.
Councilmember Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't realize how difficult land use cases could be. So I have a new appreciation for this. I would like some feedback from fellow councilmembers just on, so I hear that there's not, there's an expectation that we potentially would want this zoned as something else, but I guess I'm still not clear exactly what that, what are the other, what is the other vision and the other thought as far as what would be an appropriate zoning? Over the last week or two weeks, I've tried to educate myself as much as possible on what were the visions of councils from twenty, twenty-five years ago for this, for this property? And I don't think there's a perfect answer for what that was. I think it has evolved over time. And so when I look at this from a zoning standpoint, on the surface, it appears to be an acceptable use for this piece of property as it is proposed. And so I ask for feedback from those of you who disagree with that on like, what is the vision or what would this look like if it, if it's not this type of land use?
Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. So since our proposed got, motion got shut down, no, that's the struggle that I'm having. I partially agree with what Councilmember Hill said. I partially agree with what Councilmember Nevels said. And I get it that we want a Old Town to be vibrant where we actually attract people to come visit and so on. And I get the comment about we need something more than just a office space, or, you know, we want restaurants down there to attract more people. And I get your point about we have not had, we have buildings where they're not able to sustain because of maybe higher rent and so on, and whatever that reason may be. So that's why I was struggling as to coming to a decision today, and that's the reason why I wanted a little more time to think about that. But with all that being said, I want a development that's going to attract more with more variety rather than more of a same thing. And that's where I'm leaning towards, because again, as mentioned, if we have more office spaces, that going to attract more people to that area? That's not the whole idea of having an Old Town that you want people to go to. So I'm leaning toward what Councilmember Hill said.
Councilmember Hina Hosa Smith.
Thank you. So to answer your question, we talked a lot about Old Town and Vision 2030. It was a, we wanted it to be a place where people who lived and worked in Capel would go, right? So we knew that we weren't going to have the big-name shops that South Lake has, or Allen, or some of the other cities, and, right? Those are, those are great places. You go there for certain reasons, but that we would have some of the mom-and-pop shops, that we would have the local diners, the Capel delis, the, we'd have the walkable community, we'd have the people who live there, which is why we have residential, as much residential as we do, that we would have also some office space. But I think as we look at the current mix of what we have, we do have a lot of offices, we do have a lot of residential. And I think, and Councilmember Hill tell me if I'm misspeaking, I think a lot of it is, what I see, too, is the need for more of like the restaurant space, right? And so having these six buildings and three of them being for office and then residential up top, is that really going to bring the foot traffic that we need? And are they going to be the, like, we're not, we're not going to add space for potential, I don't know, a place for people to stay and eat or go and have an appetizer before they go to the Art Center, right? So it might be an office space that's used from eight to five, I don't know. But all that to say is, our vision was having something that was for Capel residents that would be a walkable community, and they would have the things that they need and want in that area.
I'm going to, Councilmember Hill.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, you know, the salon that went in where Doty's was, that's a good use. I mean, that's traffic in there all day long. So, you know, I can see some other services, not necessarily restaurants. But I will say that La Ventana is But I will say that La Ventana is coming into the Old Chicken Place. I talked to the manager the other day. And in the, in the coming months, they will be opening up again. So, you know, we're starting to see that things pick up and we've got opportunities. And I just don't want to squander them on office space. So, that, that's just my opinion. So, thank you.
I'm gonna exert a little mayoral privilege here for a second. You know, one of the things I'm, I'm listening and I've been very quiet, so I'm, I'm often quiet. But I think Councilmember Carroll kind of summed it up. We're not actually, I'm not hearing this council dispute the, the land use. We're talking about, you know, a change in the land use. You guys have pretty much all agreed that at least the plan is solid. So, I would put it up to the group, you know, if, if, for example, you don't like the, the mixed-use portion of this, you completely have it within your authority to make a motion changing that. And I will now yield the floor to the city attorney.
One of the, one of the things is you've got three office spaces. Obviously, some of you like office, some of you like it less. So, you can make a motion to reduce, in other words, approve the zoning and reduce the office from three to two or three to one or three to zero.
I thought that's what I was getting at.
Well, I read your mind. So, but you need to ask the applicant if he's acceptable to any of those alternatives while he's here. If we're going to do this planning on the fly, at least we ought to hear from the applicant on that issue.
Point made. We had a couple of questions up here. Councilmember Hill, did you have anything else to add? Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. That was one of my questions because I, I, I know logically it makes sense that more retail down there would drive more traffic. I've often thought is the opposite actually true? Is that not what drives the traffic? Is, do you need other things to drive the traffic? And I don't know if office is the right answer or not, but something else that gets people down there. And then, because they're down there, for, they are more apt to be almost convenience retail, if, if that's a word, rather than destination retail. And I don't know, is the, is the floor still open for the applicant to address us or not? Is that still?
You can, you can ask him a question. He may not address you.
I can ask him a question?
Yes.
Mr. Collins, do you, am I off base or is that a, I guess, can you talk a little bit behind the mix between office and retail or why is it?
You can ask him a question. He can't, he doesn't get another kiss to pick because it's a public hearing.
Okay, okay, fair enough.
Without the other side being.
Let me think how to be a lawyer here right quick. Is, if it was all retail, is, would that drive more, do you, in your belief, would that drive more traffic if it's all retail rather than office?
I believe if the properties that were facing Main Street were zoned retail, it would go more along the lines of what's going on with the foot traffic. Like I said in my previous statement, the reason the buildings that are on Bethel that are adjacent or next to Founder's Crossing is because of the traffic, the pedestrian traffic on Bethel Road versus the safety issue. So, if we were to leave the two buildings on, facing Bethel Road as office buildings, that's what has been on that side of the road. It's worked well. It stayed occupied. And if we left the buildings that are facing Main Street to be retail, which can be rezoned restaurant, where's Matt?
Is that administratively to change from retail to restaurant?
No, it's either or. They can be restaurant or retail. They, or they can make a motion.
Yeah, so if we were to allow all of the buildings facing Main Street to be retail slash restaurant, I believe that would work better with the flow and the economics of what's going down there, on down there. The larger buildings come with a larger tax base, which is more money on the cash register. The smaller buildings are going to have a lower tax base, or lower tax base, which means the register doesn't have to run the money. So, yeah, I believe that the four buildings on Main Street converted to restaurant or retail would fit the idea of what we're, what y'all are discussing.
Isn't?
And we'd be willing to do that.
Isn't that what it's already, it's the other way? Offices on Main Street?
There's one office on.
Okay, okay.
So, all four of them on Main Street would then, and the only two left being office would be on Bethel Road.
On Bethel, okay. All right.
Any other question?
Thank you, sir.
We've been here before.
Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. Part of the reason why I was talking about the, what's going to attract the, what's going to be put in there that's going to attract more people there is, I mean, we just, we just launched a program to try to have people discover Capel. And the question I think about is, are they going to discover Capel with office space? Or is it something that's going to be unique or even a dining experience that they might have in Capel that might, they might not have somewhere else or something to that effect? So, I, again, I'm going, I'm going with what Councilmember Hill was talking about as to what we really need to have there to attract more people there to make that place more vibrant than just, you know, office space or that effect.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor.
Excuse me.
There was a reason why the past council placed this area as historically zoned. They want to preserve that area for the future generations. And of course, there were some changes to some tract of land, modified and made changes and even made a restaurant, that I understand. So, this request is to change the zoning from historic to planned development in this case. And what I heard from another party today is there is another ultimate to that plan. And so, when I think about that, both plans, we have to...
Mayor Protem, I need to stop you there. You cannot take into account another case that's not part of this one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, what I was trying to drive my point to is, this proposed plan or zoning change request is not what we have listed on our ordinance. There are 40 things you can build in this particular tract of land. And of course, this is not one of them. So, again, density is one of the issue that I see in this particular plan. So, maybe going back with Councilmember Hill's, we may have to revise this if we had to think about moving forward. That's my take on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any other comments? Councilmember Hill?
Mayor, could you ask the applicant if he would consider all retail slash restaurant for all six buildings?
No, but I'll let you.
That's fair. You can ask him.
And the answer would be, I don't think it's going to be economically viable because what we're really looking for is sustainability of the businesses that are there. Frost Cupcake is a perfect example of a restaurant that was retail bakery that couldn't make it. The cash register...
Not true. I'm sorry. She retired. She did not, not make it.
So...
And when I say, I say restaurant or retail. I'm not saying both.
Right. The, the concern when we went through our planning phase of this was the proximity to Bethel Road and the traffic on Bethel Road. We're looking for the pedestrian traffic and these buildings are going to be sitting close enough that if we're driving pedestrian traffic back and forth...
Excuse?
You need to answer Mark's question. That makes you...
Sir, I think as a developer, I couldn't with a good conscience convert all six to retail and maintain the viability that I'm looking for to help build Capel.
Thank you.
Could you convert, question then is, could you, would you see a way forward to converting four to retail restaurant and two to, to office?
Yes, sir. That's what I had said before, that I believe the four on Main Street converted would feed into the foot traffic with the retail slash restaurant. And we would leave the two up that are on Bethel that go towards Founder's Crossing, that those buildings would match the use of Founder's Crossing. So, there would be a transition from the corner building to the rest of Main Street.
The answer is yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Hina Hossa Smith?
Mayor, I think I have a question for you. This is kind of, I'm just, I'm just thinking out, out of the box, just a random question for clarity on my end. On the residential piece that they proposed, that the applicant has proposed, having a situation like George's where you have the work and live, is that, that's not an option here, is it?
Well, that is what he's proposing.
Oh, that is what he is proposing. Okay, I thought it was something that, that was what he was trying to do separately.
So, it's not live-work where you have to live and work there. It is mixed use, so it's truly mixed use. You could have, someone who lives upstairs has nothing to do with the downstairs. Or is that what you're asking?
Or you can have the other option.
Or you could own it and, and do that.
Just curious. Okay, thank you. For Mr. Collins, so density is a concern for me. Density. And so, I know that Councilmember Hill asked about, would you do all restaurant retail on the bottom? You said not, no. Would you go from six buildings to five?
Economically, not possible. Same thing that happened with the live-work situation we had last year.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Hill, do you have any further comments? Do you see a way forward here?
I have to do this in the affirmative, though. Yes, I need Bob.
Do you need Bob's help?
Yes.
You tell me what to do and I'll try to do the motion.
I want to make a motion to deny it.
Okay, so make a motion to approve as presented, it gets a second, then vote against it. Just because, I'll explain. Just because you make a motion doesn't mean you're in favor of it. You're just bringing the matter to the floor to be voted on.
You're absolutely right.
So, all you need to make a motion to approve as presented. If it gets a second, we vote on it, then it's subject to amendment as you are well aware, Mayor. Thank you.
Yes, we do prefer to make the motion in the positive and then you can vote your, your will at that point.
Okay.
Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one question from Mr. Collins. I recall there was some discussion about whether that's going to be built altogether or is it as built as you sell?
Okay, so the exteriors?
No, I'm talking about the entire.
Right. The problem is that interior is going to have to be custom designed because if we were to build a retail shop and it needed to be a restaurant?
Sure.
You would then demo. So, just like we did on the live-works, the exterior shell will be built and as they're sold, they will be finished out for the client's needs.
So, all six buildings will be built at the same time?
Yes, sir.
Not one as it sells and...
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes, well, keeping in mind that this is our last shot at getting the vibrance we need downtown, I will make a motion to approve the, item number 10 with conditions.
And close the public hearing.
And close the public hearing.
Thank you. Have a motion to approve and close the public hearing. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember John. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. You seconded it? Yes. Any discussion? Councilmember Nevels?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'd like to amend the, the motion. I'd like to, and Bob, I might need your help on this. I'd like to change, I guess, add a condition that two units, Buildings 1 and 2 are office and residential and Buildings 3, Building 3 remains retail and Buildings 4, 5, and 6 are retail residential.
Restaurant.
I'm sorry, yeah. Retail.
I think is what he said. Retail restaurant with upstairs.
Yes, retail restaurant with upstairs.
So, that is in form of a motion, so I need a, that's a motion to amend.
Motion to amend.
There's a motion to amend. Buildings 1 and 2 would be, are, are office residential. Building 3 would remain...
Retail.
Retail. And Buildings 4, 5, and 6 would change to retail restaurant.
And residential.
And residential upstairs.
Councilmember Carroll, second. So, we're going to vote on the amendment to change the, to the conditions that Buildings 1 and 2 would be mixed-use office residential. Buildings 3 would remain retail. Buildings 4, 5, and 6 would be changed to retail restaurant residential. This is just a motion to amend the...
Primary motion.
Original motion. So, all in favor of the amendment? This is, this is a vote on the amendment. So, all in favor of the amendment?
Long, Carroll, Nevels, in favor, opposed? Hina Hossa Smith, John, Matthew Hill, the motion fails.
All right, thank you. So, now we'll move to vote on the main motion, which was to close the public hearing and approve item 10 with conditions. All in favor? Oh, discussion?
You can make it a motion.
You can amend, yes.
I'd like to amend it to be all, excuse me. I'd like to amend it to be all, all buildings to be residential on the top and retail slash or restaurant on the bottom.
On all six?
All six.
So, no office?
No office.
So, the amendment is that office is not an included use. Is that correct?
Correct.
Can I ask a clarifying question? We're just changing Building 3 as well. Would you, or would you ask that clarifying question?
So, I'm going to try to state this as I heard it. The mo, we have a motion to amend the original motion to convert all six buildings to retail restaurant and residential.
I think it needs, and, or why don't we just say exclude office use?
Exclude office use, which would exclude office use.
Yep.
Is that acceptable, excluding office use?
I think it's important that we, we say retail. I mean, we could do services.
Retail is service, isn't it? Yeah, retail is service, so that didn't get you...
Is that service? Okay.
Yeah. All, all you need to do is...
Retail or restaurant.
Building 3 is restaurant, right? No residents. It's all retail. Is that all right? Just no office use in the development?
No office use in the development, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have a point of clarification?
And I have a point of clarification. So, what about the one building that had an upstairs and a downstairs for retail?
That's building three.
Building three, we could leave...
Building three, no office use.
But it could be used, it could be like a two-story restaurant.
Yes.
Okay.
Or retail. You could have upstairs, downstairs.
Councilmember Hill, I'd like to try to restate your motion, which is to amend the original motion to include buildings one, two, four, five, and six to be retail, restaurant, residential, with building three remaining retail, restaurant.
With all due respect, it's just easier to say to exclude office uses within the PD.
Allow restaurant?
Well, you've already got a lot, yeah. And allow restaurant, retail.
And allow, okay.
So, I got it. Exclude office. Let's just exclude office. That's the only change. You exclude office. Everything else stays the same. Upstairs residential, downstairs, all retail, no office.
Mayor?
I got it. Councilmember Hill, are you okay with the...
Restaurant, retail.
With the excluding of the offices, the condition for the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you. We have a motion.
Want to clarify? Okay, sorry.
Do I have a second? I have a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Hina Jose Smith.
I'd like to know whether the applicant, we, we can vote all day long on it, would, are you okay with that?
Councilmember Nevils.
No, that was me seconding it. So, so I, so we could ask the applicant the question, which I appreciate her doing that.
Alright, thank you. So, is there any other discussion? Seeing that, councilmember Carroll.
I, I guess I would like clarification on this also. Is this a, because I understood...
This is an amendment to the motion.
Okay.
You're amending the approval to exclude the office use and on one and two, right? And so, one, two, four, five, six will be retail, restaurant, and residential. Building three is all retail. It has no residential component. So, by making the motion to exclude office, that's off the table.
The motion, the amendment, the motion, the motion to make the amendment is to exclude office in all the buildings. Any discuss, any further discussion? Okay, so the vote is on the amendment to the motion to exclude office in this... No, we're fixing to vote. Okay. So, did you have, I'm, go ahead.
I, I guess I just wanted to remind everybody that was, it was, we were informed that that was not a viable use. So, that's, I guess I just wanna say that before we vote. That's all.
Any other comments, questions?
Questions?
Mayor Protem.
Are we voting on an amendment now?
Yes.
Can you restate the amendment, please?
Yes. The amendment to the original motion is to exclude office use in all buildings.
That is the amendment?
Okay.
That is the amendment we are voting right now?
That's correct.
Okay.
Which makes the rest of the buildings retail, restaurant, residential. Building three is retail with no residential, because that's currently what's on the table.
Okay, so, with no further questions, we're gonna vote on the amendment to exclude office in the buildings, which would leave building three as a retail-only use. All in favor?
Amendment. Are we waiting?
No. I just asked for the vote on the amendment.
Amendment.
A vote on the amendment. All in favor?
Nevils, John Hill, opposed? Long, Hina Jose Smith, Carol, Matthew, the motion fails.
Original motions before the body.
So, on the, on the table is the original motion to approve item ten, to close a public hearing, and approve item ten with conditions. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Carroll.
Just to clarify, we did not, there's no conditions that have been added, correct?
That is correct.
The original, original conditions.
The conditions as presented by staff.
The amendment has failed.
Thank you.
So, we're back to the original motion, or the original item, which is item number ten. Seeing no, no further discussion, I will call for a vote on item number ten to close the public hearing and approve the item with conditions. All in favor?
Long, Carol, Nevils, opposed? Hina Jose Smith, John Matthew Hill, the motion fails.
There's no need for agenda item number eleven since the zoning failed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, everybody, for bearing with us. Item number thirteen is our city manager's report with your project updates and future agendas.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you want me to go ahead? I can go ahead and just...
Ladies and gentlemen, if I could ask you to please keep the noise down. Thank you.
Alright, just some project updates. Dividend Falcon and Mockingbird concrete panel replacements are complete. East Bethel Bridge entrance to Creekview neighborhood is complete. Royal Lane sixty percent design set is anticipated this coming January, so we're on track for potentially letting that contract out this summer with the completion of South Beltline. With Beltline, they're moving along on Phase Two, installing storm drain, removing concrete, and they will begin pre-grading the subgrade fairly soon. The intersection project, which is primarily now one-twenty-one and Denton Tap, probably around the first of January, they should, should be complete. Design continues on the emergency water system interconnects, which in your consent agenda tonight, those interlocal agreements were approved. So, that is, while you had a long night tonight, what y'all did on those interlocal agreements was a significant project for the city of Capel. Nobody will ever see those, but I will tell you that that has long-term implications for the city as far as potential water. So, thank y'all for doing that. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Item number fourteen, our mayor and council reports. We do have a couple of upcoming holiday events. Holiday fun is all over the city to participate in our holiday hunt. Simply solve clues and find five holiday ambassadors hidden around town, pose for a photo with each, and then upload the photos to social media with the hashtag #CapelHolidays exclamation point. Be sure to tag the city of Capel on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. There are multiple holiday-themed ambassadors hidden around the city, but only a special few will earn the holiday enthusiast a prize, so consider the clues carefully. Just as a hint, there is one outside of Town Center. Once you've solved the clues, taken photos, tagged and tagged them accordingly, stop by Town Center to claim your prize. Play continues through January sixth. Fallala Lights is the Capel Holiday Light Contest, and it's underway. Residents have decorated their homes with their holiday vests. Check them out with a map of participating homes. Go for a walk or drive around the neighborhood, and then vote for your favorite with a like on Facebook. Check back on Facebook the afternoon of Monday, December nineteenth to see the results. And it is tis the season for giving, and the animals at Capel Animal Services need your help. Through December thirty-first, stop by the front desk at the Cosby Library and Commons to drop off needed supplies in the donation box. These will ensure animal services can send each new pet, parent home with supplies. Supplies that are needed are pro-planned dry cat, kitten, dog, puppy food, cat litter, rawhide bones, cat and dog toys, blankets, and dog and cat treats. The Cosby Library and Commons will be closed on Thursday, December fifteenth, and Friday, December sixteenth for scheduled building repairs. Any changes or updates to these closures will be posted on the library's Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram pages. Theater Capel presents a little house of Christmas. The Ingalls family is warm and happy in their little house by Plum Crete, and remind us that love is the greatest gift of all. Dates and tickets are available at capelartscenter.org. And backed by popular demand is a merry circle family holiday spectacular presented by Lone Star Circus. This holiday show is packaged for the whole family to enjoy now with new acts. Dates and tickets are available at capelartscenter.org. The city of Capel administrative offices will be closed in observance of Christmas Day on December twenty-third and twenty-sixth. Offices will also be closed in observance of New Year's Day on January second. Item number fifteen is council committee reports concerning items of community involvement. Item A is the NC, North Texas Council of Governments with councilmember Hina Jose Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I unfortunately do not have my notes for A and B, and so I do not have anything to report. Thank you.
We'll skip on to council, or item number C, Historical Society, with councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. The Historical Society's been busy entertaining folks over the last several weeks. On December the second, they had a lighting in the park. There were about forty guests attending. The Capel Corral entertained the guests there. It was the first time that we have, that the Historical Society has lit all the buildings that are in Heritage Park. And everyone seemed to have a good time. On the, Society participated in the vintage Christmas that the city sponsors, the, they had Santa and Mrs. Claus attend, set up at the Minyard Store. The time was supposed to be ten to twelve. They backed it up an hour both directions, so the Clauses were there from nine to one. The Society also had scheduled a Holidays in the Park on December the tenth, which was this last Saturday, and needless to say, it got rained out. Rescheduled for this next coming Saturday, December the seventeenth, at six p.m. at the park. And the, what the, they're doing is they're providing tours for folks to visit in the houses. The houses will all be open, as well as the Minyard Store. That's my report.
Thank you very much. Item sixteen are public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. Does anybody have any public service announcements? Seeing none, item number seventeen, there was no necessary action from the executive session, so there being no further business before this council, we are adjourned at eleven fifty-two.[1795.88][1795.88]